Good morning, everybody, and welcome. We'd like to call to order this Monday, April 17, 2023, workshop of the Lake County School Board. Now, let's go ahead and begin this morning with a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you all would please rise.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. I do have one public input card, but it pertains to item 3.02. And so if I forget, wave at me, yell, do something, throw something, and we'll try to remember.
I'm good, Angel. You better.
All right. Very good. All right. Thanks, Kim. All right. Scott, I think you're going to kick it off for us this morning.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Chairman Dodd and board members and superintendent. Just want to give a brief introduction. Back in December 2022, the board issued a RFP or RFQ for construction management at Risk Services for K-8 Mineola Area Relief Project. It was no -- we notified 55 prospective bidders via VendorLink, and the district received nine submittals for consideration. The selection process was in two phases. Phase one was the initial screening for a shortlist, and phase two was the vendor interview slash presentation. A five-member selection committee was formed consisting of two members from the city of Mineola and three members from Lake County Schools. The RFQ, Section 4.2 evaluation criteria outlined and described the evaluation criteria for each phase. Today's purpose, the recommendation of the evaluation committee is advisory only, and upon submission to the superintendent for action to the school board, the superintendent recommended that the top two scoring respondents make an oral presentation to the school board for their consideration before making a final recommendation. The board presentations will include an introduction time of about five minutes, and then an oral presentation similar to the one that they presented to the committee that lasts 25 minutes. That oral presentation should cover their knowledge of the site and local conditions, overall approach and methodology, construction, material cost, cost control, and value engineering, project coordination, and safety. The board is not scoring or ranking the presentations, but rather will take notes for board discussion related to the above criteria. As a guide, this information is described in the RFQ document provided to the board on pages 14 and 15. And we had both vendors draw before the meeting, and Skanska will be our first presentation.
All right. Excellent. Feel free, come on forward. If you wouldn't. A lot of faces in the room. Perhaps maybe it might be worthwhile for you to go down the line and introduce yourselves so we know who you are, and then you can begin your presentation.
My name is Daniel Obatoga. I'm a vice president for Skanska. I lead the education portfolio for them in the state of Florida. Keith?
I'm Keith Hendry. I'll be the project executive on this project.
Trent Hamilton, senior superintendent for this project.
Steve Cowdery, I'll be the site superintendent for the project.
Jeff Short, I'm a superintendent for Skanska.
Daryl Saluscho, senior project manager.
Excellent. All right. Thank you very much.
Waiting until the magic starts happening.
Whoever's going to be doing the speaking, we will need you at the microphone because this is being recorded.
Okay.
Livestreamed and everything else, right?
All right. Good morning. My name is Daniel. Like I said, I'm a vice president at Skanska, and on behalf of this team and our company, we're very excited to be here today. Before we dive into the presentation, we're going to take a few minutes, highlight Skanska, highlight our team, and some of the key benefits that we bring to the table.
Yes.
Maybe they could sit down so that everyone can see what's going on until they're called on.
Yes, yes. Be good. Yeah, feel free to have a seat right there in the front row.
Well, you can jump up and speak.
And there's also two microphones here. If there's two of you that want to speak, you're welcome to sit here as well, and you won't have to.
Just so the folks in the audience will be able to view the presentation.
Can we try a different one? Can we try a different clicker? All right. We'll put that back. Next team to borrow it if they need to. All right. I'll resume my timer. Our Florida operations are focused on four key geographies: central Florida, Tanta Bay, southwest Florida, and south Florida. Our central Florida operations cover projects from Marion County all the way down to Osceola County, including project right here in Sumter and right here with Lake Sumter State College. Our key markets that we focus on are higher education, life sciences, healthcare, commercial, government, and last but not least, our biggest market sector, K-12, similar to the Apopka High School, Winter Garden, Ninth Grade Center, Winter Garden High School, which are all across county line. By numbers, we are the largest K-12 builder in the state of Florida. Twenty-three school districts over the past 20 years. We have constructed over 312 projects right here in Florida, and between new construction and renovation, we have touched over 28 million square feet of K-12 spaces. What we have ongoing now is 11 K-12 projects and a total of 20 education projects. We're pretty much working in every district and every county right here in central Florida. And like LCS, we are committed to excellence, we are committed to innovation, and our core values is really building for a better society. And with that, this is not just a project, this is the start of a long-term partnership. We want to be here, we want to become your trusted partner, and we're going to build for years to come. And with that, we're committed to maximizing your investment, taking those tax dollars and stretching them as much as possible. So we do offer a few benefits, actually four key benefits we're going to highlight. Benefit number one is potential CM fee savings. The 3.26% is the fee structure that we apply to projects similar to your K-8. When we looked at Aurel Yacole, the fee's about 4.5%. That's a variance of 1.3 to 2.1. That's roughly 850,000 that could be reinvested in your schools and your students. The next benefit is the team, a trusted team, not just with LCS, not just with K-12, but with the DOE as a whole. Like I said, I've been doing this for a while. I've built for 23 school districts. I'm hoping to add the 24th today, finally close that deal. But what really sets us apart is our team, starting with Ricky Bethalakwa. Ricky is our director of K-12 construction, and he comes from a school district, one of the largest school districts in the state of Florida. He used to be their facilities director. His team includes three other facilities or two other facilities directors, and they help us see things from your side. They've helped us to get a lot better, and that's something very, very unique to our organization. Other CMs do not have that talent and do not have those resources. Next is Keith. He's going to be the principal in charge. Essentially, he's going to be the quarterback. He's an LCS veteran, delivered four schools for you over the years, and he's going to help us lead this project and exceed that we ensure that we exceed your expectations from day one. During preconstruction, he's going to be supported by Steve Masucci, and both of them are going to ensure that we establish cost certainty from day one. When we transition to construction, Darrell, as the senior project manager, he's our third LCS veteran, is going to lead the contract administration and the cost aspect of the project. He's going to be supported by Aaron, and they're both going to run with that cost certainty we established early on, and they're going to take it throughout the project. As we transition into the field, Trent Hamilton, our senior superintendent, he's going to bring 40 years of experience in similar K-8 and K-12 projects, and he's going to help us ensure cost certainty, quality control, safety, and definitely maintain the schedule and beat your schedule expectations. He's going to be supported by Jeff. And a fun fact about Jeff, he lives right here in Lake County. He's over the moon about this project because he wants to spend more time with his young family and stop spending quite a bit of time on the turnpike. And just like Jeff, Steve Cowdery is going to be our site superintendent. Steve's family is entrenched here. Actually, his nieces and nephews are going to go to your K-8 once it's built. So this project is extremely important to him. So a lot of different things I could say about the team, but here's the ones that really stand out. Unmatched K-8 experience, projects similar to yours, greenfield site experience. If you look at the site, a lot of fill, a lot of variance. So we checked that box. Tilt panel experience, not just with projects similar to yours, but with the same subcontractors that built your last two schools. And last but not least, a fast-track schedule. We've lost roughly 45 days, but the schedule is still achievable, and we still have to make sure that this school opens in August 2025. On top of that, experience with the design team, every single one of them. We know their processes, we know their systems, and we could hit the ground running. And experience with Lake County Schools. Skanska has not worked here before. We're anxious to, but most of our team members have. They know Dave, they know your systems, they know your facilities department, and they want to hit the ground running as well. These are some of the references from recent clients. The booklets that you have have a lot more references from clients, community partners, local subcontractors such as ESI Durastress is in the room, including Ziskovich, who's the architect of record for your Mineola K-8 project. Now, the third benefit we bring is a commitment to Lake County. Over the last five years, we have invested over $62 million right here. That's in subcontracts that were has been awarded to local subs. For this project, we anticipate another $21 million in local participation. That's about 46% local participation, and that is our commitment for your FF project. Now, from a manpower standpoint, we currently have 302 Lake County residents working on our projects, and we anticipate that this new K-8 is going to generate another 158 projects, 158 jobs. And we're going to highlight how we're going to do that throughout the presentation. Benefit number four is really a commitment to your students. Over the last five years, we have donated over 100,000 backpacks between Manatee County and Marion County. Every year, our back-to-school bash. We've also supported community holiday events, dance programs, cheerleading programs, athletic programs, trade programs, and even donated innovation labs for Hillsborough and Pasco When we look at LCS, we have worked with most of these nonprofits, and we've started working with the Community Foundation in Marion County and in Lake County last year, and we're hoping to get the back-to-school bash here next year and a commitment of donating 5,000 backpacks to your students. As we're doing that, we looked at your strategic plan, and we've identified a couple of goals that are extremely important to us. Student success, which translates into an investment opportunity, a two-year grant, $5,000 that could help us bridge the literacy gap right here for your students that happened since the pandemic. Next is another two-year grant that's going to help us assist parents in becoming educational advocates. You know, we look forward to highlighting those and discussing those with the board in the future. As far as the presentation is concerned, we've done our homework. We visited the site, we flew drones, we looked at the building, looked at the drawings, met with the subcontractors, and the presentation that your selection committee outlined, we got four number-one votes out of a total of five. That's incredible. That's impressive. And over the next few slides, we're going to highlight that presentation just like we did a few months ago, starting with section one and understanding the existing conditions.
Starting with local conditions, understand our office is 21 miles, 30 minutes from the job site. We took the time to get out there, walk around, and we understand there'll be some coordination with the local CCDs and the local HOAs that are currently in the area. Really important, this project is right in the middle of 2,200 new homes. You've got some that are currently under construction, you've got some that are already occupied, and you've got some that will become occupied during the time that we're on site. Looking over here, we've got this gold dust over here with already you've got occupied houses, and right up around the corner, you've got some under construction. Again, those will be occupied by the time that we start our project. And to the south, you've got a whole bunch of new site work going on that'll be, again, more houses coming along. On the far side of the project over at Triple E, we want to make sure that we really respect this light agricultural area over here to not disturb those residences in there, what they've got going on. And if you live here, you know you've got a very avid bicyclist community right here, and they're up and down. You've got a main bicyclist pathway right up and down the main road, and that road crosses right over the entryway into the job site, into the neighborhood. So all of that is a safety consideration that we'll take into effect when we're building our logistics plan and explaining a little more in the future.
While we acknowledge that the school district is the AHJ on the job site, we did sit down and meet with the building department for the city of Mineola, just in the interest of making sure that we're good neighbors, to discuss any noise ordinances, pollution, or dust control measures that would be outside of the normal. From there, we moved into the 62-acre site. You'll notice there's over 70 feet of elevation difference, corner to corner. That's going to result in quite a bit of fill. We actually took a stab at how to locate the buildings on the site to try to minimize the amount of fill that will be required for the project. So we understand that there's a 75-foot setback off the eastern edge of the property. That aligns with the tunnel here, which will be connecting the park to the south of the project to the shared-use fields on the actual project site. Here you see a 3D rendering and some section cuts of what we anticipate the final grade changes to be. What's important to note here is that the buildings are placed on areas that are mostly cut, while the fields are the areas that are mostly fill. It's still about 220,000 cubic yards of fill, which is quite a bit. That's 12,000 trucks over three months. So a couple of the things we want to do to make sure that we're good neighbors, we're going to work with those truck drivers to ensure safety over the Keystone Pass bicycle and crosswalk. We're also going to be mandating that they don't slam their tailgates. None of the neighbors want to hear a tailgate slamming every five to 10 minutes or so as those trucks come in. Bringing in that much soil, settlement is always a concern, so we'll be utilizing settlement monitors. We'll place those inside the building footprints. We'll shoot them in with survey equipment every week. Once we get two to three weeks without any settlement, that'll give us the green light to go ahead and get started on the construction of the buildings.
Okay, let's talk a little bit about knowledge of the site. We know it's a big site, and down at the bottom of the page, you'll see all the gold dust here. We have our main power feeds coming in there, our main power lines are on site, communication systems are there. We have potable water systems on site. We have our fire system, fire hydrants there as well on site, and we also have communication and storm and sanitary all down the bottom of the project. So we have everything we need to get started so we can hit the ground running. As you can see, the lift station is also there, it's up in the top left of the photo there.
So equally as important is knowledge of the site or knowledge of the systems that are going into the site. It's, oh, sorry.
I think you can hear me okay.
So our team, we're experts with seven-and-a-quarter thick panel tilt construction system, as well as having recent successful success with some of the trade partners who have delivered those very same systems to the district and similar projects in our recent successful past history as well. We're aware of the technology requirement of 14 drops per classroom that the district likes to have, as well as the air-cooled chiller. Now, the chiller in itself isn't of special nature, but what is important here is Skanska's national and global partnership with Carrier. What this allows us to do is to assure that that chiller hits the job site when we need to put it in place. Some other nuances that the district incorporates, the banding around the building for protection, as well as some of the fire alarm considerations that are unique in that the smoke detectors in your IDF rooms, as well as strobe only in your ESE areas.
So one of the things I've really enjoyed working with Ziskovich in the past, and what we understand that they're moving to as a standard, is their high-performance details. It really allows you to drill down with significant detail and get things correct the first time to guarantee the performance of your building.
Now, let's jump into section two and talk about the overall approach and methodology. The approach in itself is rather simple. It starts with a kickoff meeting and establishing the LCS priorities and takes us all the way to fast-tracking your project. And in thinking about what are the most important factors for LCS, we were able to identify four key ones. One, maximizing the value. Every dollar is important despite the current market conditions. Next, maximizing quality control despite the current trade labor conditions that we are encountering in Florida and in the U.S. Third is maximizing the speed of construction. We've lost roughly 45 days, but we're still going to achieve that August 2025 opening, and that means that the school's going to be ready by June 2025. That's the holy trinity of construction: cost, schedule, and quality. And on top of that, we're going to maximize the local participation as well. And once we finalize those priorities, once we check that box, we're going to establish an overall project plan. That includes all the activities that you have to complete, we have to complete, Ziskovich has to complete. And that way, we could drive the project, hold each other accountable, and make sure that we exceed your expectations.
From there, we start understanding, right in the middle of the community I just described earlier, all of these utilities feed that community. We must make it a priority not to disturb or disrupt those utilities.
So we're in unprecedented times in the construction industry right now, and what will determine the success of the projects is success in these three key areas: the architectural areas, the HVAC equipment, and the electrical equipment to the job site. It's key that we understand exactly what the school will require very early on, establish the cost certainty to carry through the preconstruction process, and then identify lead time. And more importantly than the lead time is the reliability of that lead time information. So let's look at some of the hotspots. We track everything and anything that has a lead time near six months or greater. So in your first group, you've got your storefront and your roofing laser. Second group, your elevator, as well as the kitchen equipment. And then in the third group, you've got obviously your HVAC equipment, chillers, and then your switchgear.
We talked a little bit about the schedule also. Through this delay, we should still be looking for, on April 30, for 100% DD documents from the design team. But moving on through importance is 60% CDs by the end of June, which gives us 100% site construction documents at that same timeframe, allowing us to do an early site package mobilizing, submitting an early GMP right around in through July with an August approval and a September mobilization to start the site work itself. From there, we move into through October, down through the end of the year for final GMP development, right in early December for a mid-December mobilization for the rest of the building project.
So the next step to our approach is to ensure that quality control goes into the preconstruction phase of the project. So this is where we develop and outline our quality control program for the job, and we communicate what our program entails to the trade partners early on, to make sure that they're fully bought in and understand what our processes and procedures are. We like to start every job with the end in mind, and so that's why at this stage in the project, we also account for testing and commissioning. We build this into our quality control program to make sure that we know how we're going to finish the job and turn the building over to the end users. During preconstruction, we also do extensive and detailed coordination constructability reviews. We'll utilize our valued trade partners in order to identify ways that we can streamline construction activities for this project and enhance the overall quality.
The next step in that approach is maximizing local participation. The numbers I mentioned earlier are as a result of this quick economic study. Close to 46% economic impact right here in Lake County and potentially 158 jobs. But when we look at how those dollars and how those jobs are going to be generated, it's not immediate. This is a long job that starts in September 2023 and goes all the way to June 2025. So based on those projections, most of the money is going to be spent in late 2024, early 2025, and most of the jobs are going to be created in late 2024 and early 2025. What that means is outreach is not going to stop at the design phase. It's not going to stop at preconstruction. It's going to go throughout the project, and we're going to continue to generate those jobs and create those dollars throughout the construction phase.
Part of maximizing your local trade partner participation is understanding this is a very complex project, and how does that affect your local trade market? So you guys may or may not be aware, you've got a plumber on site that's been working in Lake County for a long time, Ross Plumbing. They've struggled on their current project due to manpower issues. By taking a look at that and understanding that complexity and that availability to work, we're going to split these bid packages up into smaller components that these smaller subcontractors can be successful at locally. So now, we continue to market the project to local craftsmen to come on board with our subcontractors and get involved with the project and get to work on the job. At that point, now we've got the parents on site, what we want to do is get the kids involved. And this project gives us some great opportunities to do construction workshops, to do some tours, some internship opportunities, and really do what we can to involve the next generation of builders in exciting schools like this.
Okay, let's talk about, excuse me, let's talk about site logistics. On the site, we have 62 acres, we've got plenty of room, right? We're going to start off the gold dust, put our main entrance in, we'll get our site all fenced in. We'll come in and get our office trailer set up for Skanska, and also for the school board, for the principal, and the project manager. We'll get our parking area set up and our laydown area set up on the site. So what we'll do, to get started, September of 2023, we'll come in and start excavation, get the thing graded out. We'll come in and start putting our retaining walls in, so we can get our tilt panel pads in, which you can see there for our tilt panels are ready to go. Pour our tilt panels, get our structural steel set, be working on the parking lots in the driveways. We're dried in here, so we're working inside, right? We're still working on the parking lot. We're working on getting our fields built, finishing the parking lots up and engrading, which finishes up at the end of June, which gives you two months to move into the school for August.
So just as a quick check to Trent's schedule, we go back to the procurement activities early through preconstruction, and we look at where those are going to land in his schedule. Looks like we're pretty good in the first group, pretty good in the second group, and then in the third group, it looks like it could be potentially a little bit tight with the HVAC and switchgear. So what we do is we monitor that stuff way in advance in preconstruction, so that if we get even a hint that that stuff is going to be delayed in any way whatsoever, we throw it into an early package to make sure that it gets to the job.
And then as a quick final summary for the schedule, again, starting site work of August of this year, full construction starting mid-December of this year, with the goal being a June 1 substantial completion to allow Lake County Schools two months to move into their full new facility.
So as we take quality control into the construction phase of the project, we first start by reviewing and analyzing all the details and transitions with the trade partners to make sure that everyone is on the same page before we actually put work in place. We then build mockups on site, and one part of our program stipulates that the actual workers, informant, crew leads who build the mockups are going to be the same individuals on the project. And then we further control the quality for the job by performing what we call first-work inspections. This is where we bring in the design team, the owner, the architects, engineers, their consultants. consultants, manufacturers' reps. We bring everyone together to review the specs, the middles, the material we have in place, and the process in which we install that material, to make sure everyone's in agreement and on the same page. And then finally, we test and validate everything on the job. We look at the building envelope, we test that thoroughly, and then we test everything down to the lighting control system to make sure that the building functions as designed and as intended when we turn it over to the end users.
Finally, streamlining closeout. The key important thing for you to know here is we are a partner through the warranty period and post-warranty period to make sure any issues that come up in the new facility get addressed in a timely manner.
On top of that, we're gonna have a six-month walkthrough, an 11-month walkthrough, and like Keith said, like I said, we're here to become a partner. So God forbid something does happen down the line, we're gonna be right there to take care of it. Now, jumping into section three, let's talk about cost and material control. Our cost efforts have already started. They started with a benchmarking effort that's comparing your project with a database, a large database of multiple similar projects that we have. However, our database allows us to dig a little bit deeper, not just cost per square foot, but we're able to look at the individual systems. This is the third time you will be building the school. You've already worked out the kinks, you've looked at, you know, finalized the program. Our job right now is making things better, making things smoother, and streamlining the project while helping to reduce costs and keep the tasks on schedule. So with that, we're gonna look at the market, we're also gonna bring the local subcontractors, the subcontractors that have worked with you on these projects, the VMGs, the Lake Glass, the ESIs, into this and make sure that they give us their feedback throughout the pre-construction phase. And definitely, Bill, you're gonna be a big part of the kitchen equipment and making sure that we keep on track with that.
So additionally, part of our constructability review is not just how to build the building and make sure it goes together, but it's to make sure it's a usable space, make sure the maintenance folks have the access to the equipment that they need to service it through its lifetime. That's the kind of stuff that we look at in our constructability as well. Moving from there, we need to talk about budget. We've taken an in-depth look at your particular project, so these numbers are reflective of this project. You start out upfront with about 20% of the project budget in your initial items, and then moving into some building envelope finishes, you're in about the $10 million range here, another $2 to $4 million right here in different specialties in your elevator, but the bulk of the money is right here in your MEP, your fire, your HVAC, your electrical. It's about $16 million in total right here. Tack onto the tail end of that, your fees, insurance, bonds, and we're including $3.7 million worth of contingency in this budget. And what that does is that brings us to a total cost right about $60 million, again, including the $3.7 in contingency. That's equating to $317 a square foot. When we look at recent projects, both by us and our competitors and their total GMPs, and we're the yellow line right here, we're right in line with what the market is seeing recently. However, taking an even closer look at that from cost control and value engineering, we do understand that's not the budget for this project. Your targeted square foot price is 280 a square foot, so we've got some work to do there. We've taken an initial look at that, and we've got some great opportunities here, working with your civil engineer, Klima Weeks. We're anticipating possibly reducing the site fill by up to 10%, $650,000 worth of savings. If we can do that, we can reduce retaining walls by 30%, there's another $250,000. Modifying the tilt building to some precast panels, this is a great opportunity. You have the largest precast companies right here in Lake County, and they are some of your biggest taxpayers. If we can make those changes, we could potentially save $1 million in project costs while feeding money right back into local Lake County subcontractors. Another easy one, we know you like LVT, but to change that to VCT, there's about $475,000 in savings there. Changing up the piping spec, you've got about $150,000 in savings there. Aluminum secondaries on your power feeds, $350,000, and if we can rework some of the conduit requirements for the low voltage, you could have another $385,000. That brings us down to $300 a square foot. Again, we're still missing about 20 bucks we need to look for per square foot to hit the budget number, but what we can give you today is our commitment to work with the design team to hit that budget number.
So the key element through the value management process is one, proper documentation to, so everyone is aware of what's approved, what's in and what's out, conveying that information to the design team so that it's properly incorporated into the documents, so that it's carried through the GMP, and ultimately then incorporated into the project through construction. While not value management, we see also the potential of $600,000 of sales tax savings, which the district can use as it sees fit for what it sees fit.
So as we transition into construction, we're gonna follow SREF and DOE requirements. We're gonna bid the project for three weeks and three weekends, open the bids in collaboration with LCS, develop the GMP, get board approval, and then hit the ground running. Throughout construction, Daryl and Aaron are gonna complete every single one of these tasks. They're gonna ensure that that cost management goes throughout the entire project. That's the processes and the systems we're gonna use, but at the end of the day, everything, every piece of paper is gonna follow the LCS processes and the LCS requirements. Now, let's jump to the last section and talk about safety. Like the team mentioned over and over, logistics on this project are rather complicated. And with that, safety goes way, way beyond the construction site. It's onsite, it's offsite, it's all the way down Hancock Boulevard. And if you look at our EMR, it's 0.61. That is an industry best. Now, and on top of that, we offer a few other safety enhancements to the project. One that is very unique to us is onsite medical services, whether it's mental health or physical health, those are free services that are provided by us to every subcontractor on site. Now, there is no cost to you, in fact, they actually help reduce our insurance cost, which translates into additional savings for you all.
Now, every day, there's more and more families moving into this development, which is why it's critical for our team to establish clear communication, to engage the community, and enhance their overall public safety. Now, when it comes to coordination with the Lake County project team, we have a number of different resources available to us to make sure that we are communicating what's going on in the project clearly, openly, and transparently. Again, our goal is to become a great partner for Lake County schools. And so as Daniel mentioned earlier, I live here in Lake County, my wife works for Lake County schools, both of my kids were born right here at South Lake Hospital, so that's why this project is a great opportunity for us and for our team to be here, to have this opportunity to give back to this community.
Now, our commitment to the community is one of our key values. We work here, we live here, we play here, so that's extremely important. So to close this out, why Skanska? In simple terms, it's really this team, our experience with K8 schools, our experience with greenfield sites, the safety associated with them, the fill complexities associated with them, our experience with Ziskovic, that has built this prototype a couple of times, and last but not least, the experience of this team with LCS, with the State of Florida, and with the Department of Education. So thank you, now look forward to very positive decision.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. With this aboard, we have an opportunity for question-answer period. If you've developed some questions along the way, or thoughts on your mind, Bill, it looks like you're itching to ask the first question.
So I get to ask one or maybe a couple?
Ask a couple.
Can you give us your contact? You said you're working with Lake Sumter, Marion and Sumter right now?
Yes.
Can you give us your contact with them?
Yes, can I email you that? I know it's Travis.
Please, yeah, I'm not asking right now.
Is at Sumter Schools, but I'll get you both contact for Lake Sumter and for Sumter Schools.
And Marion.
And Marion.
Yeah, thanks. And then you said in your, that you're gonna work for guaranteed 3.26?
Yes, sir.
Is that consistent with what you do across the board, or is that for this project?
Yes, we work based on a fee scale, depending on the size of the project, so when we look at a $50 million project, the fee lines up with a 3.26%, and if the project is larger, that fee is lower.
That makes sense, yeah, makes sense. So on the three that you're working on, Marion, Sumter, those would be in the 3.26?
No, the one that we are doing with Lake Sumter, with Sumter Schools is a $20 million project, so that is around that, it's just a tiny bit higher than that.
Tiny bit?
Yeah, like 3.3, something like that.
When you mentioned your community and your involvement in the communities that you serve, is there a reason why you wait until you get a job before you come in?
We don't.
Okay, so what have you done in Lake County?
Sorry?
What have you done in Lake County community?
We haven't. We focus on the areas that we work and we live.
That's what I asked.
And now.
But you have employees that live here and would be engaged.
And it's growing.
Okay.
So we started working with the Marion County Community Foundation, and they've connected us with the Lake County Community Foundation, and they are collaborating with us on creating something. So that's gonna be independent of whether we get the job or not.
That's what I was asking. In the course of your community engagement, one of the things that, and you went through the education process, I didn't hear you mention our construction academy. How will you be engaged with them?
Through the various activities that.
You know that we have them here in Lake County. We have them in various high schools here.
Correct.
For construction academies.
And we will work with them on creating internship opportunities, we'll work with them on creating the workshops, and we'll work with them on creating construction management programs. Now, we've done that with Hillsborough Schools, Casco Schools, Hernando, and we're doing that with Osceola Schools as well. Actually, on Osceola Schools, we have an intern as part of the project.
They have construction academies in those districts?
Yes.
And then to the bid process, you mentioned that in October you'll be going out to bid. In your industry, that's kind of on the edge of when most manufacturers are getting ready to make price increases. So are you locking in as soon as you take those bids?
Well, we're actually bidding the job in July. The site package is gonna get bid in July, and in the event we start seeing, like Daryl outlined, the cost of the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing equipment start to track up, we'll have that opportunity to be part of the, to include that as part of the partial GMP that we're gonna submit to the board in July. The intent is to get started on August 29th, like the schedule outlined. So if we see that market is trending up, we're gonna bid that stuff earlier. If the market continues to be flat, I know it's like the start of the fourth quarter, so now.
The market's cavitating right now, wouldn't you agree? It's sort of, yep.
It's flat, but you have some issues with lead times, especially on switchgear, especially on mechanical equipment that is increasing that lead time. So if either one of the things changed, cost or schedule, we're gonna try to buy that stuff earlier with your approval.
That's all I got for right now.
All right, excellent, thank you.
Just a couple. This is more for Keith and Daryl on the four that you've already built with Lake Schools. Remind me, who built those schools? Who are you with prior to Skanska?
So I was with Charles Berry.
Okay.
I was with Al State.
Okay. Just curious, what brought you guys to Skanska? Was there just a better opportunity from them, or what have you seen with them, with the Skanska team versus, not to speak about anybody derogatory, but I'm just curious as to how that experience is gonna translate over with the Skanska team and kind of what you see in that?
And if you folks wouldn't mind coming up to the microphone so they, make sure they, anybody watching at home or.
Part of the reason for my transition was the opportunity and the excitement that Skanska has to build K through 12. We did some very exciting projects in my former life here with Lake County. The company kind of hasn't done much here, and having the opportunity to come and build here again, a great middle school is one of the most fun projects I've ever built. I would love to have the chance to come back here and duplicate that experience. So that was one of the things that led me over here, but that and the excitement in general, and these team members are outstanding. It's been about the people that really brought me over here and the experiences that these people provide.
For me, it was just a return to home.
Yep.
I came back to Skanska, it was a great opportunity, the office I was working with was kind of, so it was just a great opportunity to be back with great people again.
Perfect. On the cost estimate numbers, so we made the save, we're gonna hit that number, and that was after about the $300 a foot. Are we, when we say we're gonna hit that number, is that the 280 number or the 300 a foot number?
The goal is to get to the 280.
Okay.
And what we see right now is the opportunity right off the bat that we could potentially get to the 300 with what we've identified this far. That last $20 a square foot is going to take a lot of work, but we're committed to putting in the time and the effort with your design teams to bring that together.
I'm real concerned with, I don't, concerned isn't the word, but I'm real focused on the value and the quality we're getting here, and some of the questions on like the LVT versus the VCT, is the 250 a foot really worth it? What's the lifecycle comparisons on those? Are we gonna be replacing tile? Is it not as resistant as the other stuff we've used before? Same stuff on the piping, is that kind of, is that worth the money in the long run to make some of those changes, more than just leaving those in place? I don't know, I don't wanna save a few dollars to then have a lot of maintenance down the road that we could avoid by doing it right the first time.
Everything that we evaluate is gonna go through the exercise of a lifecycle cost analysis. It's not just the first cost, it's not like looking what it costs now, but it's looking what it costs to maintain here over here. So with VCT, you have the waxing factor, with LVT, you don't. VCT is the current district standards. Now, we know from Ziskovic that the district is working with them on evaluating LVT, so that's an option. We included that as our base number and provided a value engineering option to reduce the cost. As far as the piping, again, those are some of the VE options that the district has evaluated in the past. We got that information from various subcontractors, so again, it's not nothing new to the district. And as far as LCS, you guys have some of the highest standards in the districts that we've compared to some of the other districts we've worked with. For example, the data drops in your classrooms, you require 12 to 14 data drops in every classroom compared to other districts that require three or four. So again, all that is reflected in that number that we have.
But that information, Ziskovic and they did the very first schools a design build, and so the idea was to build it not only to our expectations, but also working with the contractor. So how did these cost savings come from you over two schools they built and specified? So you said you spoke to them, and they're onboard with your changes?
We did not run our VE's through them, we just.
You're just sharing them with us?
Yes.
Have you built this prototype school with Ziskovic before?
That specific one?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. Because it was just, we've worked out, one of the statements was, we've worked out the kinks on these schools already, building it twice, and I think we can certainly still be efficient, I like the ideas we're bringing forward, but it seems like we're making some pretty significant changes or recommendations on changes to get that price down, and again, that's certainly important, but I just, I don't know, I'm struggling with the idea of having the same exact school for the third time. I know the construction industry is up and down and costs are wildly different than they were the first time, but I'm just, I don't know, I'm struggling on the idea without a super educated opinion on this, but just some of these changes, I don't know. The one that's sticking out to me, and please educate me a little bit on this one, on the building structure with the tilt panel, the precast, are we not using Durastress now on what they do on the schools we're building?
No, you are using a tilt panel system right now. Tilt panel is essentially casting the panels on site. It's rather a little bit of a time-consuming process because ultimately you have to wait till the design is 100% complete, and then you start. You can't start until everything is graded, flattened out, and all that. With Durastress, for example, you're able to start while the design is ongoing. Actually, we've sent some of the drawings to Durastress based on earlier poll, and they've started, the design mark has laid it out, come out with a, essentially a structure that works, so there is definitely substantial cost savings, and there's definitely a whole lot more community impact. It's just a design enhancement. None of the VE's that we are providing actually reduce the value or reduce quality on the project, and none of those VE's are something that the other CMs, Ziskovic and the district, are not evaluating. Now, we did not come up with those on our own. We got these in discussions with the subcontractors and a lot of the other trade partners to make sure that the values are correct, and you know, what we're proposing actually works for the district.
Yeah, I'm just curious why we haven't used this with Durastress in the past and what they do, it just seems interesting that we haven't done that.
We have done it on Penales County Schools, we are evaluating it, and Hernando Schools, we're actually doing a rather large project with Durastress now, they're our key go-to from a precast standpoint, even when you go with a masonry structure, you still have the bar joists, which have substantial lead times, substantial costs associated with them. You go with the precast double Ts that Durastress manufactures, and they're able to save money and cut at least five or six weeks of our schedule in most cases. So those are some of the creative. So those are some of the creative solutions that other CMs have not used in the past and mostly architects. You gotta point them in the right direction. Now, highlight the value added for those systems and then it becomes the norm.
Good, thank you.
I have a little different perspective from my very knowledgeable colleagues here. Having been a principal, I have some concerns that don't necessarily tailor theirs. My first question would be, how committed are you to being there once the building is given to the district and we move in? It has been my experience that oftentimes you call or there's something on the punch list and you go over it and you're months down the road and it still hasn't been taken care of. So how can we expect that you're going to take care of those things?
I'm just going back to the logistics plan and thinking of what you have done on previous schools about halfway through construction, the principal is assigned to the project. So we've taken that into account and we have included a principal-specific trailer right here for the principal to move in. That way they could start looking at the drawings, start looking at the finishes, start looking at the theming to get their opinions early on. They also could use that trailer to make, get interviews done and essentially get their office set up. Once the building is done at the beginning of June and it looks like that, you know, punch list should be almost done, but there's always people moving in between June and August. We're going to be there to take care of that. We're going to be closing out the project. Our trailers are going to still be here. We're going to be invisible, we're going to have the Jessica Lansford badging after June 1st, but we're going to be there as long as you need us. That's historically have we done, that's how we've done it. And this is essentially some of the values that Rick has added to our company over the last five years is helping us see it from the principal's perspective, from the district's perspective, what's important to you.
Let's go back to the construction academies for a moment. Can you give me some examples of how you utilize the ones in Osceola and Hillsborough?
Manny, you could jump up and speak about Osceola, that's a, an easy part.
Keep your model up, please. Because, please keep your model up that you had just.
Oh, the model. Let me go. There.
Thank you.
Yeah, so in Osceola, we're working with their construction pipeline. We're doing their skills academy. We come into the classrooms, we'll teach, you know, certain things, we'll bring our trade partners in. We're also really involved in iBuild, which is a trade partner organization. Some of the pictures you saw there was actually from Penellas County in their construction and architecture program. We brought them out to a site, we did a probably 30-something students. We talked to them about what we're doing each and every day, we walked them around, gave them kind of real life experience. We also went to their classrooms and talked to them about what we're doing. So I think it looks very different depending on where we're at and what the needs are. If there's a specific project or a specific need, we regularly look at that. One of the things we're doing right now with Valencia College is their, students are coming. Every time they have a new topic, they'll come out to a site and we'll talk about what they're doing in class. So whether it's scheduling or it's using a specific piece of technology, we just try to make sure that we're incorporating what's going on into the classroom and showing them that real life, put it to practice, so.
And another unique aspect of the commitment to construction programs, CTE schools, vocational schools is some of our jobs are demobilizing, there's equipment that's left off. In the event the owner doesn't want it, those things are donated to trade programs. So in addition to working on the construction management side, working with the architecture side, working with the drone side like Rick is doing and Penellas or what we're doing on Osceola, we are donating a substantial amount of equipment and material to those programs so that the students could actually use them.
Do you have scheduled construction meetings once the principal moves into their nice little cubicle? Do you have like weekly or bi-weekly construction meetings that the principal attends along with the other people who are working on the site?
It's a big site, that's why they look so tiny.
Okay.
But, yes. Ultimately, the frequency of the OAC meetings, the owner, architect, contractor meeting is going to be up to the district. Our recommendation is weekly OAC meetings and as the principal is hired and as the principal gets on board, then they will start attending those meetings. But ultimately, that is the district's decision when that happens.
Thank you.
So I, I think when you, when you highlighted this holy trinity, so to speak, that, that really resonated and, because I, I think that really stems, a lot of our questions stem from that, you know, those, those components. I'm thinking more about this value engineering piece there and, and certainly that, that's a way to bring down some costs. Can you clarify, so the, the engineering suggestions that you put forth today, those are, those are already being value engineered in our other projects? That those are, those are ones we're already embracing in other places?
Some are very unique to the site and some are, are being evaluated. Some of the stuff that's very unique to the site is the first couple that Keith mentioned. I'm trying to go through the very first slides where Steve highlighted the variances in the construction or in the, in the site itself. So, 172 feet to 105 feet. That's close to 70-foot difference between that. If we put the buildings here, that is a lot of fill, that's a lot of wasted money that you're going to spend. But if you look on this side of the site, 135 to roughly 156. If you locate that building here, that's minimal amount of fill that is required. Actually, we're cutting more than we're filling. And then you have about 20-foot here for the fields, you could step it down. And that way, since this is a community use space, you have the tunnel here, that flows with the part that's going to go up there. So that is an exercise that the architects and the civil engineers have already gone through with the district. We're just taking a best guess. Our recommendation is that this will be the most cost-effective site. This impacts the project in no way from a program perspective, from a quality perspective, or any of that. So that is the biggest VE.
Let me stop you for a second because that's exactly why I had him leave that model up. Because during the presentation, it didn't look right to me the way you had it set. And so I've gotten the PDF of what's being submitted, the civil engineer's already designed, and it doesn't match with what y'all have done.
Yeah, that wasn't shared.
We haven't gotten any of that.
With us.
Yeah, yeah. So when you gave us potential savings earlier, then it's all based on your modeling. It has nothing to do with what the reality is.
Well, the district did not share exactly where.
This is, this is fresh off the press.
Yeah.
Because even this one's a little bit different.
Yeah, so I know they've been going through various iterations. The initial model that they shared had the building right here. That they shared with the construction man, that model was shared with the RFQ.
It's down a hair and has the bus route that goes around the backside, the top part, but.
Yeah, we were just taking an educated guess.
I knew that, I knew that the city, I've met with Meniala many times about this.
Yes.
And specifically, they wanted that bus route back on the backside. That's why it threw me off what you had shown.
Yeah, I know that the city has been very particular about ensuring traffic concerns of the, of car rider line backing up and, and buses and so on and so forth. And so is your model realistic to, to satisfy those particular?
What is smart is that they showed it back, originally Meniala wanted it forward, the building and the parking on the backside. But Kelly shared with me just now that waste on the amount of fill, that moving it, but it's not way back there, it's closer in. And they wanted an extended loop there. But you're kind of, when you said you're going to have your construction trailers, that's the loop. So that's not going to work, but anyway, that's neither here nor there. It just was odd to me when I saw the building, that was all.
Again, this, the location of this doesn't really impact the cost. It's not a big cost driver. The location of this is the biggest cost driver. Whether this building is 20 feet to this side or 10 feet to that side.
It is in the grade, less fill.
Roughly pretty much.
Certainly, yeah, I can see that that would be considerably less fill. I'm just wondering if that is going to also accomplish the request from the, the city to ensure that.
We're going to go with the one that the district is recommending and our civil engineer's already done the work. I didn't know where that came from, that was one of my questions.
And, and I mean, just the other component, and I, I know you talked about the, you know, the, these trucks are going to ensure that they're not slamming their tailgates. But, you know, thinking about all these houses that are, that are right there, I, I guess it's, I, I don't know if just like not slamming the tailgates is enough. How, how do you, how do you really mitigate that from, from these folks feeling disrupted or disturbed for?
Well, essentially, the math that Steve went through, the 220,000 yards of fill, that equates to roughly 24 trucks an hour.
Yeah.
For about three months. So that's a lot of trucks going up and down that road. And the big factor there is doing a traffic study, looking at the peak times. You know, when is the hours? If those roads are busy between seven and nine, then we are not accepting trucks between seven.
Okay.
And nine. On the other aspect is the safety. On most construction sites, you see a safety sign right at the fence. You don't see anything until you get closer. Even if you go to Aurelia Cole right now, you don't see anything down the road, any of that, until you get to the school itself. So construction signage on a site like this are going to extend throughout the entire neighborhood, all the way down to Hancock and have warning signs, you know, and a variety of signs as required. While on the road, we have to coordinate with the city.
So there would be signs on Pearl Street prior to arriving at.
Yes. There's going to be signage even before you get into the neighborhood. And as part of our subcontract agreements with the subs, they're going to be designated truck routes so that they can't just drive anywhere they want. They have to follow a certain route. And those roads need to be clean, maintained. We're going to take into account noise control, dust control, so on and so forth. So back to your VE question, those were the first two VE's and ultimately the location of the build. You know, like Bill outlined, if the building moves a little bit, those savings are not going to change much. The next big saving is about a million dollars and that is the precast system. Again, that's not changing anything from what you have. It's just taking the casting of the panels from onsite to offsite. It's actually increasing the quality, increasing the aesthetics of those and adding a whole, a whole lot more to the Lake County participation. I think VMG is a great company, but they're out of Orlando. You know, Durastress is right here, so that's a great option.
Yeah, it seems to me that you've grabbed the low-lying fruit. I'm just wondering where you're going to get the $3 million, right? And so.
Those are about, are about $2 million, you know? There's another close to half a million in the flooring. Right now, the district standard is VCT. So we assumed luxury vinyl tile, we're going with VCT. So that is not something to reduce quality. Again, if you look at the copper versus CPVC piping, that's an option that almost every engineer starts with and ends up there. That is what you use on most of your schools. Utilize aluminum conductors.
We use copper, correct?
Sorry?
We use copper.
Use copper.
Go back to the next, the slide before.
Well, you have evaluated CPVC.
We are, yeah, we are using.
In, in the past as well. Now, aluminum conductors, again, another evaluation that's being done by the district. None of those really impact quality control or reduce or impact the program at all. This one is a little bit different. You know, your requirements has all the low voltage in conduit, free wiring is usually not accepted at LCS. It's accepted at other school districts, but it is an option that the district has evaluated on the, in the past. So we're just putting it back on the table. So most of the VE options that we presented, the district had accepted in the past or is already evaluating at this point.
All right, now what we're on thinking though is that you, so you've, you've presented a, a number of options that we're either already using or seem to not compromise the, the quality. I'm just thinking that you've only gotten halfway there despite those and some sizable ones, right? We're still looking for another $3 million. What is the likelihood?
Yeah, we got from 59 down to 56.
Right.
We still have 3.7 million in contingency included in that. So if you factor the contingency out, you're already at your budget, but we don't recommend that. We recommend that you still hold that contingency, even if you don't hold it in our contract, you guys still hold.
Right.
We just didn't want to tell you, we could hit a $53 million number without contingencies. This is the right thing to do. So we're calling it out, we said 56 million with a $3.7 million contingency. So we could actually probably beat your budget with about 60 grand, based on those numbers.
All right.
Do you have any other examples of, I mean, things you've done in other schools to get that from 300 to 280? Not that it's necessarily going to work here, but what are some other strategies that you guys are going to continue to look for to get that number down from 300 to 280 or somewhere closer to it?
There's a variety of different things, but the real money on this job is the site.
Yep.
And the building envelope, recommending that we change anything with the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems would be foolish. You have a very well-established design, we don't want to mess with it. And then the other savings really would come from how we build the building, how fast we build the building, how do we staff, the size of the team. Ultimately, we need to have the right-size team. If the project grows, the team grows. If the project is smaller, the team is smaller. If, you know, if we could build it with three people, we're going to build it with three people. If we need more people, we're going to provide four people.
Do you know what our cost per foot were on Lake Point and Aurelia?
No, I, not on Lake Point. I think Aurelia is in the mid to high, mid to hundreds to low 300s, something in that. That, it was just under the 300 mark that we're at. But again, that was a few years back.
Sure, yeah, yeah, market change, I agree, but just.
Well, the market unfortunately is changing about 2% to 3% amount. So that's the crazy part. Now it's mellowed down a little bit, but, you know, if you account for the last three years of that escalation, it's been rather hectic for all of us.
All right. Have any other questions for the group? All right. Excellent. And thank you very much for coming to make your presentation today.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll invite the folks in from Morton Smith. Oh, very good. Morning, welcome, welcome, come on in. There are a number of you this morning and so, yeah, as you're presenting, you can use the lectern here with the microphone. We have a table here with two other microphones as well. Somebody will be of frequency and they're speaking, perhaps those will be the most popular seats for you. So if, perhaps you wouldn't mind, as, as you begin this morning, just doing a quick introduction so we know who, who all of you are and perhaps that will help us direct your questions as we.
Okay, before we start there, Mark, if you'd like, I just want to talk because it's a little different setup than we're used to. I think when two of you guys are up at the same time, we'll just share behind the podium. Does that work for you guys? Can you hear us?
Or you can sit there.
Or we can sit there, okay. Some of it is a matter of pointing at the screens. So any questions from the team here? So, any questions from the team here?
And from the tech side, you'll be able to pick up both of their voices if they've got two people up. Okay, looks like that, that would work.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you wanna start with introductions? We'll start. My name's Tom Widener, and I'm Director of Commercial Operations for Wharton Smith.
I'm Jim Clean, I'll be the project executive for the project.
Dominic G. Nini, President of GSB Construction, a Lake County resident for 35 years and a Eastbrook High School graduate.
Paul Rattenhausen, Area Superintendent, Lake County resident, 19 years in Sorento, and proud to say that all four of my kids graduated from Mount Door High School.
James Manette, Senior Preconstruction Manager.
Marie Lamb, Project Engineer.
Ariel Rolon, Project Manager.
Robert Terwilliger, Project Superintendent.
And we have a couple others in the room with us. Brett?
I'm Bradley Till, I'm with Marketing.
Tim Smith, President and CEO.
Tony Henry, Marcom, Director of Marcom.
Excellent, thank you very much, appreciate that. And we probably will forget all your names, but...
That's right, there's no test.
All right, very good.
Oh, you're good? Okay. Oh, good morning, thank you for your time. We're here to present on the Mineola K8 project. So much appreciate the opportunity. You're gonna hear from us this morning. It's the same presentation we did a month ago, so we haven't changed anything. And the numbers that you're gonna hear, these are actual numbers. These aren't made up, hypothetical, maybe it might happen this way. These are numbers that we're gonna share with you that not only this project, Aurelia Coal, as well as Cafeterium, Four Corners, we also did that K8. So, these are real numbers that you're gonna hear from us today. So, this beginning part is the intro. We wanna talk and cover a couple of the elements that were in the proposal section of the, of the RFP response. Couple of the items, talk about local labor participation and our emphasis on local labor. That's always a big part of what Wharton Smith does when we approach a project. We do outreach to, to give the local subcontractors opportunities. These are some of the subcontractors you see here. We've always sought to increase our percentages. Dominic specifically is gonna talk about that in the presentation. We're also going to talk about, Dominic's also gonna talk about what, why the role as a partner with Wharton Smith and GSB, why that's so important. Why would we do that? What the goal is in order to be able to help develop local contractors such as Dominic and his team to eventually be able to work directly for Lake County schools. And Dominic has already learned a few things, as well as his people on the project. So, it's a matter of us giving that mentorship to a local contractors. Also, in the proposal, we talked about, we actually have an affidavit talking about how many employees actually live in Lake County. Wharton Smith and GSB have 25 that live in and play in Lake County. You heard of a couple of them this morning on the specific team. In addition, it talks about the proximity to the, to Lake County. So, I know that 27 miles to the east of here is our corporate headquarters. That's where Tim Smith, President and CEO, sits. So, within an hour, he can be here to answer any questions that you have. So, we have that local proximity. So, further commitment to Lake County, it means more than just subcontractors with our, and partnership with GSB. We also do all types of things for the school district directly. A couple of the things I wanna point out here, what you see here in this picture, this is Lake Point Academy, where we have ACT. If you know what ACT is, that's the Academy of Construction Technology. Lake County Schools actually participates in that. That's where we use high school students that are getting educated on the vocations, where they have an opportunity to work on Lake County school projects. In this case, we had Brian Tran, not only one, but two summers that he worked with us. Actually, next Tuesday, the 25th, are the interviews for the next round. And so, we'll pick up students that come to work on the Aurelia Coal project this coming summer. So, it's a great program, and we're very active with that. I also like to highlight with the Education Foundation, we are Business Partner of the Year this year. So, that's quite an honor to be able to be recognized for that. So, a lot of times, we go and talk to students in classrooms, and we always like to start with a little icebreaker. So, this morning's icebreaker, we're gonna have the guys talk a little bit about trivia on what they've learned on your K8 project.
All right, good morning. Robert Terwilliger, your Project Superintendent on the last two K through eight schools, along with Ariel Rolon. And wanted to see, Monday morning, everybody's excited to be here. Wanna see if he's learned or paid any attention on these last two projects, see what I taught him. All right, can you tell me the number of tilt panels on this one?
There's a total of 181 tilt panels, which takes 16 days to tilt.
I think we can beat that, but that's good. All right, how many tons of structural steel are we gonna be putting in place?
There's over 400 tons of structural steel, which is equivalent to 24 school buses.
Spot on. All right, how many cubic yards of concrete? And can you guess Paul's age?
There are set, over 7,000 cubic yards of concrete, whether in the tilt panels as well as the foundations. Paul's age, undetermined.
There you go.
All right, thanks, guys. So, I'm gonna introduce your project executive, Jim Clean, and he'll kick us off here.
Good morning. So, what Ariel and Robert did for us today was demonstrate our experience with this prototype. The entire team that's working on this prototype has experienced through three separate occasions of building it. One was with Orange County, two has been with Lake County, the most recent being Aurelia Coal. And we're wrapping that up now, which is on time, and it's under budget currently. We also have some experience with the community. So, Claremont, we're working in now, we have a very good working relationship with them. We'll do the same on this project. We'll do a lot of collaboration, coordination, to make sure that we're being good neighbors and we're providing a safe working environment. And what does that mean to you? Well, that means that we don't have a learning curve. We don't have to worry about how we're gonna figure out how to build this project. That translates into cost savings because we can look for cost savings initiatives. We can also protect you all by making sure and protect the project by making sure that we're mitigating as much risk that's out there in the marketplace. And here it is, your K8 campus experts. Dominic and I will, will be the oversight for the project. Ariel Rolon is gonna be your project manager, and he's gonna be your single point of contact. Again, all of these team members have experience with this K8 prototype. And again, here's some familiar faces, and this is the trusted team to bring this new Mineola K8 to fruition. And some of that experience translates into our experience with the architect, which is Ziskovic, as well as their subconsultants. These are four examples of projects we've worked with Ziskovic on now. Three, again, are the prototype. The value of the work is over $135 million over the last four years. Again, a very successful relationship. And one of the themes throughout this, this presentation is going to be our continuous improvement. We don't settle for just what we did yesterday. We're looking at today and tomorrow. You can see this glowing reference letter from Ed Napier at Ziskovic that says that we identify opportunities to improve each project. And that's gonna carry forward in this project as well. I'll turn this back over to Tom.
Okay. Thanks, Jim. Yeah, we constantly look for continuous improvement. Asking those questions of the designer, you're gonna hear some elements that we've done in the past projects in order to help save you guys money. But first, we're gonna start with the knowledge of the site and local conditions. So, Ariel, can you start us with just going over the main characteristics?
Yes, sir. With the RFQ, we understand that it is a 35-site, 35-acre site, greenfield. Your total budget, $53 million, with a substantial completion of June 2025. With that being said, the surrounding area, we understand the hills of Mineola. It's in development, over 4,000 new homes being constructed. You've got a future regional park, and also being cognizant of the adjacent neighbors to the, to the east with your Mineola K8 directly in the heart of that.
Robert? Thank you, Ariel. All right, so utilities, these are the lifeblood of your campus. This is something that we jump on right from the beginning. What you're gonna see up here, this is a locate ticket that we've already called in. They, they come out, they identify all the locations. We've been onsite, me personally, several times. This is a process that we're gonna manage from beginning to end. So, we're familiar with all your local providers here, as well as the ordinances of City of Mineola. We understand hours of construction, early morning, poor notifications. This is something that we've done very successfully at the Aurelia Coal project we're currently on for you. This one is right in the center of downtown Claremont, here, as you can see. And Paul Erickson, the project manager, we've been able to keep him happy, and we're gonna do the same for you. Any problems, they have our personal cell phone numbers. It's after midnight, we go to Ariel. All right, so let's go to your new site for the Mineola K through eight. What we're looking at here is, we're looking directly north, okay? And you're looking up the hill. The first thing I've noticed when I've been out there is a significant change in elevation that you're gonna encounter. This reminds me of exactly what we encountered. This was the existing Claremont Middle School, now your new Aurelia Coal project. Over 50-foot of elevation difference from East Avenue down to Pitt Street. So, how do we take this site on the side of a hill, level it out, and build you a brand-new school? All right, so out here, we imported over 140,000 yards of fill and moved 70,000 yards of onsite dirt. While this is happening, we're building retaining walls on the high and the low side. We're also putting in select underground storm utilities. While you're doing this, you can't just go, go in there without a plan. When that water hits the site, and let me tell you it did, we went through two hurricanes with this. Where's it gonna go? It's gonna find the lowest point, right? So, what we did is develop a series of burns, temporary holding ponds, which, it ended up in your permanent pond ultimately. So, this is something, a couple rows of silt fence isn't gonna be enough. We're ready for it, and we're gonna help keep your neighbors happy.
So, I have to brag on the team. We did go through two hurricanes on Aurelia Coal. A lot of rain fell on this site. Because of the BMP and the planning that we did with your civil engineer, Jay Kleema, they actually had an inspection afterwards by the Department of Environmental Protection, DEP, to... They don't wanna make sure that we're not allowing this muddy water to run off into the pond down below. The neighbors wouldn't be too happy about that. So, they came and did an inspection, got a glow-in-the-report, straight A's. Appreciate the team's effort on that. We can bring the same thing on this Mineola K8 project. Ariel, we're gonna start talking about overall approach and methodology at this point, and how we look to have continuous improvement.
Continuous improvement is key. Wharton Smith has not built this prototype once, not twice, but three times. The team that stands here before you has built it twice. We are always seeking improvement. We have been able to reduce, from Lake Point Academy to Aurelia Coal, we've been able to reduce efficiently the amount of RFIs, which are requests for information, by over 30%. We have been able to identify improvements. And with that, we introduced Eve Hines, who is our low voltage specialist. She's been working with the district, as well as the, the design team, to generate guidelines, district guidelines, that can be used for not only this project, but all future projects.
Paul?
Thanks, Ariel. To expand on the photo that Robert went over of the existing conditions, I wanna talk about this, and Robert will run through the animation in a, in a minute. The yellow area you see all the way around the property, that's construction security fence and silt fence for once we get started. Each one of these lines going down there is a contour line or a change in elevation. All the way up here, at the very peak, is elevation 200, and all the way down here is elevation 110. So, that's a significant drop in elevation. We propose that we have the building somewhere in the middle and pick an elevation 140, 150 between the two. We take all the dirt from the high area, move it down into the low area. Basically, you're, you're going from this to this. Balance site, which of course saves on import and export of fill and saves money. Son, run us through the animation.
Thanks, Pops. Just like Paul started with, first thing we're doing when we get on site is we're getting it balanced. So, we're moving dirt from the high to the low at the same time. Retaining wall's going on. We're maintaining that 75-foot landscape buffer, coming in, building the crane roads. You can see foundations, column pads starting. I've done this twice. I know exactly where I wanna start lifting these tilt panels at. We're starting in the stairwell, section B, to the two-story. We're gonna wrap around, hit the three-story, cafeteria music, classrooms in D, and then the gym. Before we're done tilting panels, we already have steel on site. We're flying it in, and they're chasing them, all right? Then here comes the fun part, the interior. All this HVAC overhead electrical, we already have all this BIM ready. We're ready to go tomorrow, okay? We know all the ins and outs, all the challenges. This captive air unit at the kitchen, rotate that 90 degrees, get through the joists. Just little things like that we're aware of, and we end up with your beautiful new K through eight.
All right, preliminary schedule. Let's start with the fact that I've been personally involved in this prototype all three times. So, nobody knows it better than we do. The key is early procurement. The construction industry since COVID has really turned upside down. Price escalation, for one, lead times, especially with mechanical and electrical gear. We're looking at from 12 to 16 months to get them. So, it's very important, and we're doing this on a lot of our jobs now, early procurement. We get in there, we, we get the material ordered so that when Robert is ready to put it in place, there's no delays and we stay on schedule. We're ready to start next month. We already have the submittals from the previous two jobs, we're ready to go. Robert?
Yes, sir. Just like Paul said, that early procurement's gonna pay off towards the end. So, just what we talked about, we're starting to balance the site in February. Key is getting to that building pad so we can start the building in March. Then all these activities, your tilt panels, steel, roofing, they're all following behind. We get to the interior finishes, and we get you turned over May 2025. We know that's when Dave Parker wants to move furniture in, we'll be there to help him. What we got for you is a 15-month schedule. We can do it faster, you want it in 12, and we wanna make it a race. I can win the race, I promise you that. But this is the best value and quality. You avoid unnecessary overtime cost.
All right, how do we manage the schedule? I wanna specifically talk about this here, that is a site logistics plan. Again, we know this prototype so well that we broke in the building up in areas, area A, B, C, D, and area E, the gymnasium. So, when we sit down with our subcontractors for our weekly scheduling meeting, we're not just talking about hang drywall, first floor. The A, B, C, D, it could be everywhere. We say hang drywall, first floor, area A. Metal stud framing, second floor, area B. So, we pinpoint things so tight that these guys know every day exactly where they gotta be and when they gotta be completed. And Robert, take us through the rest of the way we manage.
Yes, sir. So, how do we manage this schedule? What you see here is a P6 schedule. It basically takes you every step of the way through from beginning to end. What we do is then break it down into small or short interval plans. We meet with the subcontractors on a daily basis, meet with the owner, architect, make sure, you know, all the issues are resolved timely. This allows us to hold subcontractors accountable. In this marketplace, it's challenging, and allows us to identify issues before they arise.
All right, maintaining quality control. One of my many duties as an area superintendent is to make sure that every single one of my jobs is maintaining the highest level of quality. There's several ways that we ensure this. One of them is pre-task meetings. We'll meet with each and every subcontractor before they step foot on site, and we review what the expectations are of the quality that they're gonna put in place. And they know that if they put something in place that we're not happy with, it's gonna be taken and redone.
Thanks, Paul. Just like you said, you wanna set expectations from the beginning. That's why we do mock-ups. What you see here is an example of a tilt panel. And right here are tilt panel books. These are full of all our rebar drawings, architectural. We go out, before you get to this point where you're picking up the tilt panel, setting it in place, we do a thorough check. We're not doing it just for tilt panels, though. We're doing it for every step of the way. This room that you see here, you're gonna see all the interior framing, you're gonna see the insulation, electrical roughing, your overhead. You're gonna see a restroom with tile on it. That way, we set the expectations early.
Efficient closeout. Closeout begins day one. It starts with submittals, as-built, um... Submittals, as-built, and O and M manuals. Closeout, I'd like to highlight Marie, who is a vital part to our team and this process. She is knowledgeable of Lake County, what they need, meets with shareholders to coordinate startups, turnover, videoing, turnover, as-built as well. But she's able to do that on Lake Point Academy. on Lake Point Academy. Excuse me. Within the last, she was able to complete that process on Lake Point Academy within 30 days of substantial completion.
Tom?
Yeah, thanks, Ariel. She did a fantastic job because, you know, she just makes sure she addresses those subs in order to make sure that she, they get the as built and all the closeout documentation, the training done for your staff. So I'd like to invite James up from our pre-construction to talk about construction material costs and a little bit about what's going on in the market these days. James?
Sounds good. Thanks, Tom. Wharton Smith obviously has a robust staff to support your pre-construction needs, but I'd like to focus on two differentiating elements for us. The first is that we consider ourselves an extension of Lake County school staff, so we're not just your partners, we're your advocates there when dealing with subcontractors or collaborating with your engineering firms. The second point is that having the experience of going through the three previous K eights means that we don't have to spend a lot of time focusing on budgets and concepts because we know what that's worth. For us, that's historical data that we have in-house, and so we can just extrapolate that to your K eight Miniola project. Cost trends. So having done the last, the three K eights in a row, we have real-time data that tells us that this is the actual cost for each K eight going through the years from 2020 to 2022, currently with Aurelia Coal. We have an understanding that the building cost for Miniola is going to be around 46 million. The unknown on this one is the site because we don't have a geotech report yet telling us, are we going to be able to do all of the import, are we going to have to do important fill, are we going to be able to level the site? Is your local adjacent contractor going to do the clearing and grubbing for us, or even the retaining walls? Those things affect the cost, so that is a little bit of an unknown currently today, but we do have the rest of the cost understood. Early procurement, with the unprecedented supply chain issues, obviously everybody's talking about the procurement issues that we have, so it's imperative that we give you accurate early procurement feedback. How we do that is with in-house database that tells us on all our projects, what is going long lead, what is retracting. Example, security cameras were at 40 weeks. Now we know those would be 10 to 12 weeks. It's not something you're going to pay for in an early procurement. Instead, we'll focus on the items that are a long lead. Electrical, HVAC equipment, structural steel, and the food service walk-in chillers. Those are the main ones. Managing cost escalation. So cost escalation is tied to market mandates. It's something you can't control, but we can certainly manage that for you. And how we do that is the early procurement process, making sure that it's accurate and also going direct to suppliers, doing this early on so you go to market early, lock in those costs early, and don't pay for unneeded escalation contingency on those items.
Yeah, so to reiterate, we definitely recommend an early procurement package on this, and we've already done this previously. On Aurelia Coal, we did an early procurement package. Again, that guaranteed that the products were going to be on site by the dates needed, as well as it saved that escalation cost that James talked about. The RFP also talked about alternate materials to make a suggestion. In these cases here, we implemented these with your facilities group from Aurelia Coal, so it totaled $300,000 worth of savings on Aurelia Coal. So again, the foundation of our commitment to Lake County is based upon our partnership with GSB, so Dominic's going to share a little bit about that partnership.
Thank you, Tom. As Tom mentioned, we're Wharton Smith's local participation partner for this project. Our relationship dates back to 2007, and since our mentorship began with the Aurelia Coal Project, our company has seen significant growth, not only in the number of employees and our annual revenue over the year, but our employees that are involved in the project on a day-to-day basis have seen significant growth and development thanks to Wharton Smith. These opportunities have allowed us to further pursue Lake County school work as a prime contractor, especially with the upcoming continuing services contract for Lake County schools that we'll be looking forward to participate in. I also wanted to note that since our partnership with them on the Aurelia Coal Project, we were able to increase the local sub participation approximately seven percent from the Lake Point Academy, which resulted in about $3.5 million worth of extra work going to Lake County subs. So being in this area for over 40 years, you know, we understand the challenges that this marketplace has as far as local resources, labor. So we've got a robust plan in place for local subcontractor outreach. I wanted to highlight one of them is that we've, as soon as we're awarded the project, we plan to host multiple outreach events where we can invite local contractors to hear more about the project. Many of your school members were involved in the last one. That was a success for Aurelia Coal. And then also, something that's unique to this team is that we plan to host multiple site visits to the Aurelia Coal Project. This allows subcontractors to walk through an ongoing project of this specific K eight, get to visualize as we're finishing the project, and it helps provide clarity for a better overall GMP. So not only on this project do we look to maximize our participation for subs that call Lake County home, over the last five years combined, working on various projects within the area and outside the area, we've paid over $100 million to local Lake County contractors.
Thanks, Dominic. Cost control and value engineering. So we are a CM. As James mentioned, we want to be an extension of your staff. The great thing about the relationship as a CM is it's all open book. It's transparent, and you get to see where all the costs are in that. Ariel's going to share with you a little bit about how he does that and tracking every dollar on the project.
We use eBuilder, as you wear. It is a district construction software. We use that within conjunction with the facilities department, Dave, Melissa, Marie, and Debbie. It'll track buyout, contingency, pay applications, change orders, but everything will go through there, and ODP. Speaking of ODP, between the last two projects, Lake Point Academy and Aurelia Coal, we've been able to process $1.1 million of tax savings.
So again, what does all this mean for the district? All this experience means we can bring that benefit to you. We are able to start literally tomorrow. We have the information, we know the process, we know the people in order to bring that benefit to you guys as a school district. Here's a list of all the different VE items that RFP asked about that we've actually done for the district in the last three projects. There's almost $3 million here, but one specific, I want to talk about the site grading. On Aurelia Coal, when we first were awarded that project, the design firm had designed it to bring it all the way up to that, the road elevation. We started asking a few questions, said, what can we do if we lower that elevation? Because for every foot of dirt we had to bring in was going to cost roughly $100,000. We were able, just by asking that question, they modified some of the sidewalks. You have a beautiful campus there. We saved almost, well, we saved $900,000 on that. That's not a promise, that's, that's actual dollars that we did for Lake County schools because of our involvement there. Also on that, I also want to point out that, you know, as a good neighbor, that saved all those truckloads of dirt on that road. That's why we get that letter from City of Claremont that, that Robert talked about earlier. So anyways, that's the kind of thinking that we'll bring to the Miniola K eight. Other VE options that we specifically see for this project, the design's been, you know, on target, pretty close. It's getting squeezed down, but potential savings, we see there might be another $500,000 potentially. Of course, we don't want to diminish any scope or any quality because you still want to provide a high-quality school for the students of Lake County. So, but right now, we see further discussions that might equate to another $500,000. So project coordination and safety. Safety starts with Robert on site, so why don't you talk to him a little bit about your approach there?
Yes, sir. Wharton Smith, safety is absolutely number one on the project, not just for the workers on site, but the surrounding community. We do this by job site walkthroughs with first responders. We comply with all JLA badge requirements, and again, we're good neighbors. This gentleman that you see here is Gilbert Orcasitas. He's our safety director for Wharton Smith. His grandchildren are going to school right across the street from Aurelia Coal that we're doing now. So when we say your kids are our kids, we truly do mean it.
Thanks, Robert. A couple other things we like to talk about whenever we're in the middle of a neighborhood or developing neighborhood is communication with the community. We did this on the four corners, we did it at Aurelia Coal, and there's various options of how we communicate with, with the neighborhood, but number one thing is it's always coordinated with Lake County schools. You guys control the messaging that goes out, and if you have any questions, we could talk more about that in Q and A. And finally, I talked about a couple of these things. We're excited to be a part of the community. We really feel that that's our commitment to give back to Lake County, and these are the various ways. Of course, if you have any questions on any of those programs, we can cover that in Q and A as well. So we started the presentation with some fun trivia. Well, I've got some questions for you that hopefully are easy ones, but, you know, what firm is, is the best firm that has the experience with this prototype? What project team has the most experience with Lake County schools and with this prototype? And ultimately, what firm can you trust on the Miniola K eight? I hope that's an easy one for you to answer, and again, thank you for your time today.
All right. Thank you very much. So with that, I'm sure we've got a few questions.
Do you mind if I?
No, go. Please, kick it off.
It was interesting to me because on request for proposal, or request for quote, I guess, whatever it was, that they brought up their construction management fee, and they compared it to the project you just did.
Yes, sir.
They did a 3.26. Where do you stand? Because it's not in your presentation.
So part of the CCNA process is, you know, it's not a negotiation process, it's based on qualifications, so it's not normal to put those kind of fees in, in the presentation or in the proposals. Just to clarify why we, we did it the way we did it, I know we've negotiated fees previously, but the big thing with the fee that you have to be careful of is there's different buckets of money. There's general conditions, there's burden on labor. Did they talk about that? Did they talk about your reimbursements? Do they get reimbursed 20 trucks, 12 trucks, five trucks? You know, those are all kind of things that you got to kind of ask questions to kind of pull it up to the surface. So is it really just that fee, or is there other buckets of money? General liability insurance, that's another big cost that gets incurred on a project. Ours gets audited, it's an audited rate, so we actually show how much our GL fee costs. Other firms, they, they have ways to boost it up to like 1, 1.5%. I can tell you, our audited rate's somewhere in the neighborhood of .35, .35%. So .35 of 1%, really the smaller number. So anyways, you got to ask all those questions in order to make sure you're comparing apples to apples whenever you're looking at different CM fees.
So I guess really to make the ultimate comparison of apples to apples, you're looking at the bottom line, right? And so.
And see, that was what was odd to me is that it's not typically brought up at this stage.
Yeah, yeah. So, but you've got a pretty big unknown in the bottom line, right? So we know the building costs, you're estimating it like 46 million.
Yes, sir.
But the site costs, I guess we don't know if that's going to be 5 million, 10 million, you know?
So you're right, we don't know. What we understand is, number one, from my understanding, the site hasn't even been finalized, that the school district doesn't own the site quite yet. We've been told that since the initial presentation. So number one is we, we need to work with the developer on determining what that scope of work is going to be. As, as, who was it that talked about the leveling of the site? I know Paul talked about it, but I think, James, you talked about it too. The dirt, there's a lot of money in the dirt. And so if we're able to work with the designers in order to determine what's the optimal elevation of that building path in order to save the most money. So we need to ask those kind of questions. There's, I mean, we, we talked about in the Aurelia Coal example, there was $900,000 just by lowering the site eight foot. So if we can work that through, then that'll start detailing a better picture of what dollars in it in the site work. The other question, same thing comes up, is on the retaining walls. How much retaining walls are there? Are we able to slope down and not have retaining walls? Or do we want retaining walls? We need to, those are all questions that's more of a dialogue, not a monologue, and so I can't stand right here in front of you today and tell you exactly what that figure is. Now, what I can share with you is if you take a look, can you go to the estimate slide? So we do feel comfortable that the, we, we understand where the building costs are coming. We have a lot of data that points us to that number there, but we do have a question mark on the site. Now, you can see Aurelia Coal is $6 million. Well, if you take and pretend that $6 million on top of the 46, you're at 52 something, pretty close to your budget, but we all know that, we've been talking all morning that costs aren't standing still. There's an escalation. But until we get a chance to kind of talk through some of those other details on scope of work, it's hard to tell you. I know we're close to the 53 million. What I can guarantee you is that we're going to do everything we can to get you there. Another story I have, Cafitorium at Cypress Ridge. That one was another example where Wharton Smith wasn't awarded that project. That was awarded to another firm. The other firm couldn't come to terms because some of the things we're talking about here today, there were other pockets of money that the, the firm was doing. And so we came to the table, said, nope, we're willing to do this. Not only are we willing to do this, we're going to work really hard to get, what, $6 million down to $5 million to meet your budget. We spent countless hours with the engineering firm, the design firm, facilities guys, in order to get that down within the budget, and ultimately, we got it down to the $5 million budget. That's what I can guarantee you we can do on this project.
One of the things that I didn't realize is that you didn't use Durastress. Is there a reason that you don't use them and their, and their best?
So here's the thing with using pre-cast versus tilt up, which is cast on, on site. The difference between pre-cast and tilt up is you have a transportation cost with, with pre-cast. Every panel has to be, then be, it's made somewhere else and then brought in. So there's a cost to all those trucks coming in, as opposed to pouring it right there on site and then just tilting it up. There are some projects that we've looked at doing that. A lot of times, the, there's different factors that will drive the cost. That, that would be a great question, that we could sit down with Ziskovic, with whoever vendor, and kind of talk that through on what that pricing looks like today, so that we can see. Maybe the market has shifted towards Durastress where that pre-cast, it makes sense in this case, and ultimately saves you money. So we, we'd be open to having that discussion.
That's all I've got for right now.
I have a couple. Bill asked a lot of them, a lot of good questions. I just want to say first off, I appreciate Mr. Smith being here. Thank you for coming. It means a lot for you to be here in that presence as we continue these partnerships. Back to the trivia portion, which I thought was cool. Bill mentioned on the tilt panels, structural steel and concrete. Are those local subs at current proposed, or have they been in the past, or what are your thoughts there? Bill touched on the Durastress one, but.
Right. So what we've, what we, specifically to the concrete, there's a firm out there, a second-tier firm called Florida Atlantic. They do a lot of erecting. You saw that number of $100 million. We've been working with Florida Atlantic for many, many years, in not only Lake County, but in a lot of different districts. They specifically are the ones that tilt up the buildings for you, or they don't tilt it up, they do the structural steel for you. So that's a, that's an example of where we do have a local firm, and not only are we keeping local dollar local, in that case, we're taking dollars from other districts and bringing them back home to Lake County. That's actually a better dollar, right? You're bringing tax money from somewhere else to Lake County. So we, we look at that. The other one that we're excited about, and this is an example of where GSB has brought us in, and, and introduced us to Alex Core. It's a, it's a concrete company we were not previously aware of, doing a fantastic job on the concrete flatwork at Aurelia Coal. We just talked about it last week, that Alex Core might be willing to look at doing some tilt up. And so we would, I think they do tilt up, it's just to this scale. We definitely want to have that conversation with Alex Core and see if that's a company that might, we might be able to introduce them and bring them into the tilt up world to use in other places as well. Don't let me talk too much. If you guys got something to say, you got anything to say?
Perfect.
So that, to answer your question.
Yep, awesome. And we touched on it a little bit, and just trying to, to get an idea of general ways, not necessarily this is exactly what's going to be on this project, but I think there's a lot of value in the Ziskovic relationship and building the school three times already. What are some of the other things you've learned from Lake Point to even Kelly Park to Aurelia Coal, now that you want to bring here? What else? Why is that so valuable, I guess is my question.
Well, number one is we already have that work, working relationship with them, and we have the database. Literally, if, if we got awarded this project today, we could start ordering materials tomorrow based upon that close-knit relationship. And it's not with just Ziskovic, it's with Matern Engineering, who's your mechanic- It's with Matern Engineering, who's your mechanical and electrical engineering. It's with Jay Klema, your civil engineer. There's several other designers that we have, BBM, the structural engineer. So if we're going to have the Durastress conversation, we definitely want to bring in Bora and Louise to talk about what that would look like from the drawing standpoint. So it's relationships at every level to be able to pick up the phone and go, Jay, what are you? I mean, Jay Klema was one of the ones we've worked with in order to lower that site. That's the kind of conversations we need to have. That's where those relationships come in because it's a trusted relationship. Talking way too much. I'm probably going to hang this one up.
Good. No. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler.
I just have one question for clarification on, say, the Durastress versus Florida Atlantic and the tilting up versus pouring on site.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this something that, in your expertise, you've considered in your mind and you perhaps decided one over the other? Or you strictly at a place where you would look into both and make a decision once you have those numbers?
So as a CM for you, we don't necessarily make the decision. We'll bring the recommendations to you. So we have both options so that together as a team, we can collaborate and make the best decision for the project. I can tell you on other projects that we are currently doing, one of them being up in the villages, we have both. We have done tilt up as well as we have precast that have come onto the site. So in certain instances, it makes more sense for the precast as opposed to the doing, doing the tilt up. And so to Bill's point, we could definitely have that conversation so that we could answer that question and then talk about it. Because the other thing you gotta look at is schedule. And you gotta look at timing, especially in this market, on making sure we get started quick enough in order to make sure we deliver that school in May of 2025. But we definitely welcome the discussion and that, we would facilitate having that discussion, so. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'm, I'm just kind of trying to think things through from a residential impact.
Yes, sir.
Point of view, right? And, and one, that you've got a recommendation on where the building would, would be placed to get us some savings in terms of the, the fill dirt there. Based on that design, does that, in your opinion, create enough room for you to get a lengthy car rider loop, to get the traffic off the roads, you know, as people line up an hour before dismissal, you know?
Right, right. And you gotta have that long queue line.
Right, right, right.
Parents off of the road. Same thing we did at Lake Point Academy. If you've been out there at dismissal, they have that long queue. So again, Mark, that would be something that we'd want to sit down with the designer. And then, so we talked today about kind of the elevation of the pad. We'd also want to talk about horizontal location of the school. There's times whenever we, as the CM, are going to recommend and say, well, if you move it over here, you're going to save some dollars. But there might be implications of operations. The operating the school might be more difficult that way. And they go, no, it's worth it to push it back over here. So we'd have to talk that through. I can tell you the, the Kelly Park K eight, that's a very, very small parcel of land that that school sits on. And Jay Klema was able to get the queue line, because they have the same challenge there. He was able to get that long queue line to get those parents off, so, off of the road. So I'm sure that with this site, that that would be a possibility. And we could look at doing some creative solutions in order not only get them off the road, but we'll save you money in that.
And then, you know, the other, the other thing that I'm thinking about just during construction, you know, with, you know, the number of houses that are already there and that will be built in between now and then, what that impact is going to look like for those residents? With all the dirt coming in, all the trucks coming in, so on, so forth, how do, how do you ensure that we're good neighbors during that?
Mark, I love the fact that you asked that question because finally I have an opportunity to have Robert. Come on, Robert.
So that's one thing. We sit down with the city, like we saw the letter from Paul Erickson. We want to set the expectations early. So we'll go over hours of operation, right? When can we be moving dirt? When can we be turning on lights, backup alarms and all that good stuff? So what we buy out a lot of times, and we'll do the same thing from our site contractors, you owe us stormwater, you owe us sweeping the street on a daily basis. I mean, there is a, an active school right here, the drop off every morning and every afternoon. And we've had no issues. We keep the roads clean. When we have major deliveries, we schedule them around those hours. Okay? If there's any early pour concrete, you know, we have to do that. That way, we're off the streets early and we're not bothering residents. We'll fence off the entire site, just like you'll see, you've seen it in Aurelia Coal. We have security on site and make sure any curious kids don't get in there and hurt themselves.
We're very diligent and we take this, this very seriously.
Let me also add to, so part of the, can you go to the slide with the business card? So we've worked in plenty of areas where there's new developing homes coming. And so I'd gone to that one slide about the communication with the community. So in this case, this was a perfect example. We did this at Four Corners where we created a business card. Because what happens is the community gets super excited about a new school going up. Well, then they want to show up on our campus and they want to ask Robert and Paul and some of our other team members, hey, are my kids going to go to school here? What's going, you know, what's going to be for lunch on Tuesday? I don't know. And so it's, rather than having our staff members try to answer all those traffic questions, all those kind of questions that the neighbors are going to have, we set up a toll free number as well as an email. And we say, thank you for your concern. Thank you for your question. Here's a business card. Do you mind please emailing in or leave a message? And then we would get with your staff to figure out, how do we answer that back? Is this a concern that's in construction? Is it dust control? Did we make somebody's pool dirty because we got too dusty? And, or is it a traffic thing that is kind of out of our control, but we can, we can get the right people talking to that neighbor? So that's an example of where we can, we can control the message out there and handle any concerns that the neighborhood has. Did that answer your question, Mark?
Yes, I think so. Very well. Yeah. I, I have kids at that school across the street from ACA.
Oh, Cypress Ridge.
And never once have I been impacted by your construction.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Good job, Robert.
But I think, I think I only heard from one resident in this entire duration about some vibration early on. And I think that you all sent out some mitigation to, to try to control that.
Yes, sir. And that's common in construction. And so we monitor the vibrations and, and actually we do things to subs reduce the number, the amount of vibration as well.
Yeah.
Is the security 24 hours?
So what we do is again, we're looking at for the best value for the district. So most of the time, the fence is always up. There will be no work going on, on site unless there's a Wharton Smith or GSB representative to make sure that people are behaving, doing what they're supposed to on site. We lock up the fence. At some point during the, during the construction project, we'll make a determination on when the best time we start 24 hour security. I say 24 hours, we don't pay for a security guard sitting there while we're working during the day. It's, we, we're strategic about those times, the weekends, things like that. Because then we don't need people coming in and either doing vandalism. That happens a lot of times where they come in and they, they spray paint on the walls or they come in and steal some of the stuff, especially in this market, that copper is pretty valuable. So we'll pick the right time to then bring in the security guard. And they, they work those times to make sure that the school opens without any, any issues, so.
Get them all answered?
I'm good.
Anything else? Excellent. Well, we really appreciate your presentation today.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Again, thank you very much for your time.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Thank you.
A little bit of discussion here to form your recommendation.
We take the five minute break. Mr. Chairman, can we take a five minute break?
Do you want to do that first or do you want to provide a little bit of discussion that would help the superintendent inform her recommendation?
Well, I'd rather take a break or I'm going to wet my pants.
Well, okay. Then I suppose what we'll do is we'll take a five minute break first. All right. We'll recess for five minutes. Thank you.
I didn't hear what you said.
I said you were two minutes early.
Oh, thank you.
Well done, well done. All ready? Okay, all right.
Feel better?
Thank you.
Great, well, let's come back to order after that much needed break. And so with that as a board, I think we're just gonna have a little bit of discussion without necessarily indicating who your favorite is, right? In order to help guide the superintendent's recommendation.
You want me to start?
So I think that both presentations were pretty amazing, both very professional, both showed experience. And I think either one would probably do a good job. My impression is, is though, and by the way, they tied, and so hence, that's the reason for this. So that says, is credit to the screening committee. With that said, we have a tie, and we have someone we already know. That was part of that tie. And we have someone that, I don't know if y'all know it or picked up on it, but Dominic that was with them actually is a general contractor in our community. And back when we were really pushing for community engagement and contractors from out of state always or out of county coming in, that they partnered then. And that's a relationship that has continued, is that partnership between Dominic, who's an independent contractor and is working with Wharton Smith. And he's getting the skill sets and the knowledge to move forward where he one day will be able to bid a job on his own. I think that the numbers, the numbers that Tom Wagner presented to us have more credibility with me because they're real numbers. They're actual experience, where the other is more hypothetical. And so my leaning would be, oh, we're not supposed to say that. My, I think y'all might get a sense about where my leaning might be. So that was the major for me. Oh, excuse me, there's one other. One of the things that Wagner, that Tom brought up was actually the moving dirt rather than bringing dirt in. That can be huge, just for the record.
That's right.
And be better for the site. So I thought that gave them an edge from the standpoint of site knowledge.
Tyler, what was important to you?
I just think the familiarity with Lake County schools, with the architects, with the subs, building this exact school three times already, two of them for us. I think there's a lot of value in that. And looking at the numbers, when you get down to a tie, it's a matter for me moving forward of just asking the question, why the written response doesn't factor in ever? I think that there's a lot of time and energy that goes into doing a written response, just to get a ticket to the dance, to then do an oral presentation like this. And especially when you get to a tie where there was a pretty significant point difference in the written portion, I just think that should be factored in. And I know we're following the RFP, and there's nothing wrong with how the RFP was written necessarily. This isn't on our staff, in my opinion. This is just how can we continue to improve this process moving forward? We're gonna build a lot more schools here moving forward, it appears, and just clean this up as we go. And kinda like what they said on getting a little better with each job that they build, trying to tighten up some things on our end. So to try to avoid situations where a tie can occur, math can always work itself out that way. But trying to find, just kinda clean up our procedures and how we're looking at these moving forward. But also, the written presentations, I think, need to carry some weight. And that's maybe more something moving forward to consider, and not necessarily try to set a precedent in the middle of this one. But I think all things considered, with a tie, with the familiarity, with the written responses in the presentations today, two very, very qualified contractors. But I think given the situation, there's one that I lean to more than the other.
Well, I think relationships matter tremendously. For me, the bottom line would be, since we've utilized one company twice, they have a lot of knowledge. My question would be, is there anything that has occurred in the previous two jobs that stands out to us as something that's a problem for us? If we haven't had a problem, and we have a relationship, and we're looking at the same people that have done this job for us twice before, and if it was a job that we were satisfied with, then I would see, you know, a reason to give some strength to the fact that it's a repeat. I think the more times you do something, the better you become at it. But I also believe that sometimes it's important to make sure that we're checking and that we're not overlooking things that may, should have stood out to us. So that would be my question of our, of staff. When you think back on the two previous projects, was there anything that stood out that you think could have been done better? And if so, was it addressed in these presentations? And Ms., I know, I keep looking at you. Well, it was a kind of like, could you help me?
I think the answer would be no. I think both firms are very well qualified. We have not had an issue with Wharton Smith that would stand out that, you know, I would think would lead to disqualification.
Then in that case, I would say certainly, you know, when given a choice, perhaps you should go with something that you know.
I was, I was looking at that through the exact same lens as you did, Molly. I think you articulated my thoughts on my brain very well. You know, and I think there were some elements of experience that stood out in the presentations today. You know, I was thinking about the community impact, and we know that that's something that's very important to the residents of Mineola. And I've seen very minimal impact a construction site has had on residents in Claremont, living right across the street. To be able to think about how to control and contain that. Experience with the prototype is important, not only from the budgetary standpoint, but also the timeline. You know, we saw timelines that were only off by a month, but still, you know, one was a little faster than the other because they've done it before and have some experience with that. Clearly, we want a school to be ready at the start of the school year, right? We don't want it to be ready two months in. And so, so that's important as well.
Before y'all move on, and you've got Ms. Randall here, so maybe she can touch on this. But it's good for y'all to know that we may have a unique solution for the site work and some of the dirt movement. So if you wanna touch on that.
Oh.
So just to give you an update on where we're at with this project, as Mr. Widener alluded to, we do not yet own that site. It is a, we have a memorandum of understanding with the city of Mineola and the developer. We are in the process, we've been working through various site things and are presenting to the city of Mineola tomorrow evening. And hope to have their buy-off to allow the developer to transfer the site to us, so that we can go ahead and get started. As part of the memorandum of understanding, it actually calls for the developer to grade clear and level in that, one of those orders. Clear, grade, level, anyway, to give us that site. And so we have been in discussion with the developer about possibly doing that work for us in return for, for impact fee credits or some other compensation. And as part of doing that, because it's a timing issue, doing that site work, going ahead and building those retaining walls as well while they're doing that. So it's an ever-moving puzzle that we are working through, but that would save us some time as we move forward to be able to do that. So I think that was what James was alluding to, all right.
Okay.
I do, since you're up there, though, I will tell you that it is an honor to be a wingman. When Kelly gets up and speaks to the Mineola City Council, it's an honor to be the wingman. When the superintendent, for a few years, was negotiating this whole deal and with the developer and with Mineola and me in the room, she's amazing, you, you're amazing. And I'm proud to just be on the sidelines watching it.
Can I invite you tomorrow?
I'll be there tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you. All the support we can get, we are hoping to have things wrapped up with them. You know, as you saw, our timeline has gotten increasingly short. We are pretty much at a do or die for 2025. And so we are hoping to go ahead and get that approval with the city. Some of the site things that you've seen, we've actually been working through, you know, Scans to Scad, we move, we have moved the building further back on the site because that actually not only helps with the fill issues and the grading, but it also allows, too bad we don't have the thing. But if you noticed, as you came up from Keystone, the houses rose. And so moving it further back on the site actually allows all of those residents on the west side to have a better view over the fields and over the buildings. And so that, you know, that we've kind of tried to take as many of those things into consideration, minimizing the amount of retaining walls. The latest version that we have that I just got on Friday basically provides for a 200-foot buffer along the west side of the property that will be, you know, fairly evenly graded at a five-to-one slope. And so, you know, we're really trying to be as cognizant of the concerns of that community as we can, as well as putting a lot of stacking on the site, probably more than honestly any school that we have in Lake County.
A lot.
Yeah.
All right, well, that would be well received.
Tomorrow, we will have some good answers.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I do have one more question. Kelly gave me the nice segue there, just on the timeline and where we are, and this one's more for Mr. Myers. Based on how this RFP is written and the outs that are given in there for the committee being just recommend, or just as a, as a recommendation from them that we're not necessarily bound to, if the recommendation does go the way of Wharton Smith, do you envision any ways for Scans to be able to protest that in any way and delay a tight window?
Could they, sure, they could always protest. What the basis would be, I'm not entirely certain, and without knowing exactly what their basis would be, you know, the validity or quality of the protest, I can't speak to yet. Is it possible? Yes, always possible.
But you don't think we'd be setting a precedent of any kind of necessarily going against the committee in this case and what that could?
As I mentioned to each of you individually, you each, I mean, the board has flexibility here. The committee's recommendation ranking, you know, evaluation is advisory only, and you guys make the final call.
All right, good. Gives you what you need to form a solid recommendation.
We'll plan to have this on the agenda for Monday.
All right, Monday it is. Excellent. With that, we have 3.02 involves the healthcare plan. We do have a public input card on that particular one. I remembered. So Kim Cronin's coming on down.
Good morning, board members.
Morning.
Superintendent. I don't want you to take this in any way that I'm negative about adding another plan to our current plans that we have. Now, I think that our employees have been used to Blue Cross Blue Shield for a long time, right? And it's kinda like, you know, a no-name brand and a famous name brand, right? So I think that this is gonna be a lot of education for our employees to have them understand what the difference is with a third-party plan. So today, you know, scenario four, we'll be, we'll be doing away with the $500 deductible plan and also raising the $750 deductible plan to $1,000 and increasing their out-of-pocket maximum. This impacts about 2,600 employees in these two plans. 827 of those employees are non-instructional, your most lowest paid employees. And I know that the non-instructional employees, the affair is not having $1,000 for deductible if something was to happen to them. I feel as though this move is being forceful. I'm not sure if that's how you want to present it to your employees going forward. HPI can be a good plan for some employees, maybe for a lot of employees. I believe if they're educated enough to make the move, they will. But then you also gotta think about the other employees that may be in these two plans that already have doctors that will not be covered by the HPI. And, you know, I know how I am with my doctors. You find a good doctor, you wanna keep a good doctor, right? So I think that, you know, we want our employees to be comfortable with their health insurance. We want them to be able to go when they're sick. And, you know, I think that some of these employees already have issues, right? May already be involved with doctors and hospitals that are not covered in this plan. So I don't, I don't wanna feel like we're punishing them for not making this switch, all right? I was trying to get scenario three pushed through, so I just, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. You had 20 seconds left over, maybe we'll add that to next, next go around. All right, thank you very much. Give us some background and the presentation I had today.
Good morning, board. Superintendent, thanks for taking the time to listen to insurance talk again, which nobody is super excited about, except me, apparently. So before we dive into the specifics, and there are a lot of details here, so we'll try to make it as palatable as possible. I just wanna talk about the process a little bit. So the healthcare plan is one of the most expensive things we do. It's on the level of building schools. $50 million is kinda a round number. We spend $3 million roughly every month just in claims. That's not counting any of the supporting monies or the RX costs or any of that stuff. That's just claims money. So we have to, because we're self-insured, carry a 60-day fund balance with, be able to pay for 60 days of claims. And that's kinda the number we use to see how we're doing as far as our spend goes. We had caught up substantially. We were in a bad spot for a while, we caught up, and now with increasing costs and limited funding, we're going the other way. We will be negative, and it's how badly negative we're gonna end up is based on what we choose to do. And so the committee, the insurance committee worked really, really hard on this, and I don't just pay lip service to that. I mean, there were difficult discussions. There was five, five different votes and motions throughout the course of this with various rediscussion and failures. And it went on for hours. I think we were there three hours that night.
Final meeting.
Yeah, the final meeting. And it, we ended up with scenario four being the recommendation of the committee. The other recommendation we made, and this is just food for thought, the, we also talked about the broker contract, which had ended. We discussed with the, all the members, including the unions, whether we would wanna extend out long enough to get any potential plan moved forward with Gallagher. And the committee was agreeable to that. And at the end of that extension, moving into a full RFP for broker services for the healthcare plan. So all that said, I will let Josh run his slides and feel free to interject as needed for questions. Like I say, this is very, very meaty stuff. The big concept here, third-party administrator being a plan that Kim actually mentioned, would be a slice of our book of business with the intent to drive down the cost of one particular plan, the one that would be in this scenario eliminated, and reducing that debt to the fund balance. So there, that's a primer. You got the down arrow right there.
I do. I have the one that works, so that was nice of the construction guys before me to hand that to.
And this is Josh with Gallagher.
I think most everyone knows me here. Thanks again, appreciate the time here and echo what Rob says about both staff and also union members as it relates to the committee. Just a lot of thought and consideration in this. And certainly, I put a lot of thought into it, one, because Lake County Schools is a client, and also, I'm an employee as well, right? So I think about how I, you know, obtain benefits. I certainly care what my employer does to me. So a first thing is, let's just walk through, like, why did we even talk about doing this RFP? Was there a need? Why do we think there was a logic to have the need? Then from there, touch on the RFP process a bit, then go about what the plan looks like. Again, just to, in case people's minds are wondering out there, right? This would be an option alongside Florida Blue. We're not getting rid of Florida Blue. And no change on the pharmacy side as well, because that's something that a lot of people think about. Well, that's something I do 12 times out of a year if I'm on maintenance medication. So pharmacy plan, exact same between Florida Blue and this other option. And this would be, as we've indicated, an option. From there, we'll go into the plans and pricing, so that's what we're dubbing scenario four. We're not listing the other scenarios here, just due to scenario four was the one that was ultimately voted on and approved by the committee, but happy to kinda walk through ultimately why I think the committee landed on four and the dynamics at play. And then finally, an aspect that is really going to make or break whether this is a success, at least in terms of understanding, right? People know their Florida Blue plan, you kinda set it and forget it, right? Good, bad, or indifferent, off you go. We wanna make sure employees are very well educated on this plan and what their options are. It's an option, right? So it's not for everyone. Some people are gonna love it, others, hey, maybe they should stay put. So we wanna talk through that there. And then we'll go into, you know, next steps, any other questions you have, and certainly can ask questions as we go through throughout this. So what we're listing on this slide, and this is on a fiscal year basis, so your plan runs on a 9-1, your fiscal year, right, it's on a 7-1. This is showing what the fund balance is. So the fund balance is, we collect dollars both in terms of what the board funds, what the employee funds out of their paycheck, their payroll deductions. We take that, less claims and administrative fees and stop loss. And what we have over was the balance for that, that year. And then next year, it's either incrementally better or worse than, than the following year. Okay? So we ended up, you know, fiscal year end '21 ended up quite well for a couple of reasons. One, we had some down claims, you know, people not going to the doctor during COVID, so we had claims retraction. And that was also in the midst of a year where, if you all, sure, you're very well aware, where the board increased board funding as a kind of a one-time clip to catch up. So in a way, it was somewhat lightning in a bottle. Revenue was higher than ever, claims were lower than ever. Now we've created this gap, right? Fiscal year end '22, the, you know, board retracted its contribution, and that was intentional, right? It wasn't intended to be at the higher pace there. Claims went up, and we'll show that on a subsequent slide. So that required claim fund balance of $8 million. That $8 million is not static, that's a moving target, it's based on 60 days of claims. You know, everything, we're tracking good there. As we continue to see the claims, I, you know, approached Rob and the risk team and said, hey, I think we need to have a conversation about, we need to do something different about this. You know, most organizations can't just solve it with top-line, you know, funding. We gotta figure something out. And how do we do that while looking to preserve benefits as much as possible? Because that's a great reason why many people, employees, work at school boards and work at various municipalities, right? As for the benefit programs there. And that's how we ultimately got to the RFP discussion. You can see as we go through here down the line, you know, we're projecting fiscal year end, you know, '23 for the fund balance to be a little bit around $2 million, so that's a loss. And if we keep going the way we go, we're gonna have even greater loss for fiscal year end '24. So that assumes no increase in board contribution, employee contribution, or no plan design if we just, you know, go forth as is. So the bottom, you know, headline there is, we'll either need to, you know, increase rates, do something different, or a combination of so, to arrive at a breakeven number. This next slide is a bit busy, but this puts it into, you know, numbers, somewhat what we shared on the prior slide. This doesn't have the running tally of the fund balance. I'm just kinda walking you through the numbers row by row. So this is actually on a plan-year basis, so 2020, 2021, that'd be nine, that'd be September through August, okay? And then the far right-hand two columns are year to, are plan year to date, so that's gonna be claims through February. So the 2021 is gonna be September through Feb of '22, and then the '22, '23 is gonna be September of '22 through Feb of '23. Just call out a few items that we put in words on the prior page. You can see at the bottom left on the 2020, 2021, total budget of $52 million. You know, plan cost of $47 million. So that negative 5.1 million's good. That means we, 5.1 million to the good, right? If you, if you go to '21 and '22, we had the inverse, right? We reduced our budget, so that was really the board, right, contribution reduced, and then our claims went up. So we had almost the flip side of what happened in the prior year. So the, you know, the incremental gain, we got to the fund balance, we almost gave back in that prior year. And then, and then no upward mobility or increase in budget there. And then the budget also did not increase for '22 or '23. So the budget has remained static on a per-head basis. It will certainly ebb and flow as you have employees, right, come and go on the plan. But that's how that'll end up taking place. So that's why that difference from budget this year is 17.3% higher. While our claims have gone up and our budget has remained, has remained relatively, you know, static there. So the, you know, bottom piece, right, our claims continue to go up, you know, every year. You know, budget's reduced, and we haven't adjusted. When we look at, okay, well, is this just, you know, one-time expenses? What's happening, you know, from the claim side? And it's a little bit of everything. We actually go to, you know, the next slide.
Josh, real quick if I can.
Yes, sir.
What do you attribute to the average monthly enrollment going down pretty, pretty significantly? Are folks just getting better plan options from a spouse, or are we?
Yeah.
What are you seeing there for that much of a drop?
So good question. So the first, the left two columns, those are full years, relatively static, right? The 48-66 and the 48-13. The far right two columns are partial years. There's some seasonality with the head count, where you have teachers leave during the summer, and then they join, you know, when summer comes, and there's a lag on when they join. And then we also had, I believe, a few charter schools that might be more the difference in the '22, '23 versus '21, '22 that fell off, that's creating that variance there.
Okay. No, 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 you finish it and I.
Got it. One other quick one. What else encompassed in the admin fee and really just more, it looked like it was at 39.25 PEPM for the first little bit, and then it's up to 40 PEPM this year. Can you just speak on that a little bit?
So that's the administrative fee that Blue Cross charges.
Okay, so that's all Blue Cross?
Correct, yep.
And then the, so the rate increase from 39.25 to $4 was completely Blue Cross-driven?
It was. We had a three-year rate guarantee and an adjustment there in the final. Yep.
So, since we don't have the guarantee anymore, does that mean it could increase?
It, the way that the increase is structured, and I could look up what next year's is, I think it goes up by 2%. But if you look at what that, what they're referencing, that fee, you know, at $40 per employee per month, you know, divide that into the entire total is a relatively, you know, small amount in terms of the, the cost piece. What we're trying to control, not that we're not focused on that. We want to, we want to make sure that people are paid fairly to do the work, but not that they're being overpaid. But we're, the biggest piece of the cost are those, really, those top two rows that you have there, the medical claims and the pharmacy claims. So, right now, you pay Blue Cross that $40 admin fee, and that's their fee for, you know, managing a network, for paying claims, for anyone who's ever gotten a call from a nurse at Blue Cross.
I get all that. But I'm asking, will it increase? I just want to know if it will increase.
It can.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sorry.
I do love talking about insurance.
Okay.
Do our clinics, are they part of this number? I thought clinics were to reduce our exposure.
So, that's, that's the intent. The more people that use that, the lower the plan cost is because they have negotiated rates on some of the more standard drugs. Obviously, the visit cost is cheaper, but that's driven by utilization. And so, if not a lot of people go there, then it doesn't save us as much money as we would hope. So, that's another...
What's our experience?
The clinic costs is, there's actually a line item for the clinics. As I said, it's probably two-thirds the way down.
I see it. But, but why isn't it impacting the, so is it in there and then also in the medical claims?
No, it's not being double counted. So, that, if we want to look at 20, 2021, that $4.2 million was paid via, that's an all-in cost with the clinics, administrative fees, the claims fees that run through the clinic there. I think, I think what your, your question is, is, you know, the whole value proposition, or a, a great part of the value proposition of clinics, is to reduce, you know, healthcare spend out in the general, you know, ecosystem here. And that's why a lot of organizations...
But it doesn't look like it's working, is it?
It's working. It's not working to the level that we would hope to make dramatic impact. And one of the pieces of this third-party plan is that we can really lean on those wellness centers as primary cares, and that would help drive more utilization. That'd help drive down more cost. So, that, we kind of get a double whammy out of the TPA plan along with the wellness centers. That's the idea.
That's on the plan three?
No. Well, I mean, it would be anytime we introduce the TPA, they, they could be named as the primary. And they can, in general, anyway. But that would be kind of an easy, you know, hand-in-glove kind of scenario there.
Right. To use the clinics as, what I don't think the clinics are doing as effectively today, and it would be to change that with this new plan, is to get them to refer out for, if you think about how many people don't have a primary care or don't have a specialist in nature, well, where do they go? They go, well, you know, Mark, who do you use? And, you know, you had a good experience, which may or may not be indicative of, you know, clinical outcomes, et cetera. So, the idea would be to have this new plan, would partner with the clinics and look at, okay, who are the higher-quality doctors in this particular area? For people that don't have a relationship, you have a relationship, let's not upset that apple cart and get them to refer out that way. Because people, if the clinic's the front door, that's not their one-stop shop, right? If someone has another issue, the clinic can't handle everything there. And we think that that's a missed opportunity just in terms of how care is being directed.
So, to that point, what are, what have we been seeing clinic utilization? Has it been going down or less employees going to the, to the clinic and choosing to go either to...
No. If anything, it's be static or higher. Like, there's not a lot of, and Rob, you could speak to much of it.
Yeah. 80 to 90% utilization is, is what I see. So, yeah, it, we're not, we're not sitting there at 60% or anything like that, and we'd be having a conversation if we were. So, it's, it's decent.
Well, what, how do we go from it's decent to, when I first asked about it, it's not, it's underutilized?
It's underutilized in that I don't feel we are using it to its maximum capacity. We, we could absolutely add more providers. We could add more locations. We could do a lot of things if we could justify it by driving people there. And I think you, if your plan is kind of designed away from the Blue Cross, like, okay, what do I do? I can, I can go right here to this clinic that we pay for already. That's kind of how I'm envisioning it being, getting better.
Thanks. Well, you missed quite a segment of your population with the clinics, right? I mean, so there are no pediatric services. And so, that's expensive, right? So, all of those children are going to outside doctors, whereas only your employee, your spouse are taking advantage of that. So...
I think when it was initially brought in, the idea was to keep the time where people are out of work to a minimum, because obviously, you save money there as well. And so, whenever it was set up, they didn't add that as part of the pilot. I've been looking at other services that are available, and that's a discussion for another time. But bringing in more services, I think, will, like, to your point, increase utilization.
Yeah, I agree, Mark. It's a missed oper, or misspopulation in terms of maybe volume and number of heads. But when we look at claims exposures from employee to spouse to kids, it's not on a one-for-one basis, you know? You know, one adult might equal three kids in terms of claims absent, you know, an unfortunate severe condition or, you know, soccer accident or something to that effect. They generally don't have as much, you know, ongoing ailments there. That's not to say that it wouldn't be an amazing benefit, right, to be able to have that. But in terms of reducing the...
It'd also be a tough, tough market to grab, I think, as well, because, you know, a lot of those pediatric services are real high-quality doctors that you find. And I don't know that it's always been my experience with the doctors you find at the, the clinics. And so, you know, that's, that's a tougher sell.
Yep. Okay. So, when we, when we look at this next slide, so, you know, what's driving increase in claims? And, you know, from, from a condition perspective, it's, you know, what you would expect. It's hypertension. It's diabetes. It's, you know, you do have, you know, your school, right? So, there are, you know, childbirth, right, all of that. But what we're, what we're calling out here, and let me just kind of, because the slide's not, you know, entirely clear. So, we're saying inpatient visits on a, on a per-member-per-month basis. So, that's to, you know, take into account, you know, wow, your inpatient cost went up. Well, yeah, well, I have 3,000 more people. Of course, it went up, right, to look to normalize for claims, are up, you know, 11% on a per-member-per-month basis. So, what that means is, on a unit basis, you know, hospitals are charging more, people are in for more severe needs. And then, you know, the payment side being up at 24%. So, when we look at utilization, people are going up in a lot more there. So, both utilization and, and costs are up. So, you have, the way I look at it is, the cost of bread is more, and we're eating more bread, is, you know, maybe just another way to ultimately explain that.
Josh, to that point, on the payments being up, are you seeing, looking at the trending data, that we're having more high-cost claims, more cancers or other illnesses that are costly on a, an individual basis than we've seen in the past? Or is it just trying to curb behavior on, on where folks are going for services and trying to, to utilize better-priced avenues as we move forward?
Yep. So, it's a good question. You, you have had more high-cost claims, and certainly, you know, healthcare can have an impact on that, as can clinics and everything else. You know, the really, really big claims, and I guess that's, well, what's your definition of really big? If we, I went back a few slides here. When you look at the, the specific recoveries line, so Lake County Schools, while you're self-funded, you do carry stop-loss insurance. So, you buy stop-loss insurance there. So, any claim that's over, I believe this, the level is 315 grand, you're not actually paying for. You're paying premium, you know, for that, for that level of insurance there. And if you look at the specific recoveries in 2020 and '21, you know, you got $1.4 million back from stop-loss, and you paid, you know, $1,605 in stop-loss insurance, which, you know, for most people would say that's a, that's a bad deal. But it's insurance, you know, if you look at what you're paying on your homeowners for the last 10 years, what you got back, ratio-wise, it's a bit, you know, different. If you look at the, the next year, you paid 1.467 million, and you got back 1 point, you know, 1.3. Then we look at, well, hey, actually, last year, the same time period, we paid 725 and we got 296, which tells you that large claims are not linear. You know, people don't get sick cyclically. It happens when it happens. And then we'll, we look at this year, which I think answers your question. Tyler, we've paid, my, yeah, sorry, just making sure my lines are correct, 799,000 in stop-loss premium, and we've received back 1,606. So, I think that answers your question, just as a, as a ratio perspective. Yes, large claims have gone up, up to that, that level. And this slide, for, for the benefit of the board here, this was taken directly from an insurance committee meeting, as we led up to, when we talked to the committee about, do we want to go out to RFP? What are we trying to accomplish this? Was, you know, saying, we really have a few different ways that we can address this fund balance. And the first is, which I didn't put out there, because I think if someone else on the board was in the room, they'd jump across the table with two arms, which is, well, the board can just pay for it, which is clearly not an option, right? You know, first is increased deductibles or other plan design changes. We'll just, you know, put on, that's just a, that's a form of cost shifting, right, when you increase a deductible. The next is increased contributions. So, contributions funding, so that's the total, which would be a combination of board and employee. And if claims are going up, that has to be a part of the conversation, right? And then, you know, the third is, well, what if we reduce the cost of care by just, by paying less for, for coverage? If we can, you know, purchase, the current dynamic is, well, we hire a TPA claims administrator, whether it's, in this case, Blue Cross or United Healthcare or Cigna, and they have, you know, negotiated discounts with the various providers. But in a way, when, you know, XYZ Hospital's cost goes up and Blue Cross, United go to negotiate with them, yes, they're negotiating. But for self-funded plans, they don't have a ton of skin in the game, right? They're, they're simply administering the network. You've given them, and contractually, by the way, an open checkbook, in a way, to, to administer claims and trust that they're doing it appropriately. To which, many people, I think, would say, well, Josh, what about their fully insured business? So, meaning business that most small business owners participate in, where I write a check to United Healthcare and, or Cigna or Blue Cross or whoever. And then they, you know, I paid them 100 grand in premium, and they paid out 110 in claims. Shouldn't, don't they want to keep the cost low for that? And the answer to that is yes, with a slight twist that, within the Affordable Care Act, there's what's called minimum loss ratios, which means if, once you go below a certain, called profit margin, you have to dividend that back to the state, or, no, excuse me, not the state, to your book of business within the state. So, I believe it's below 80%. So, if I collect 100 grand as United Healthcare and I only pay out 80, right, I pay out 75, that $5,000 variance to get me to 80, I now have to, to refund back, not for that particular employer, but across my book of business. So, my point in saying that is, there's not a real incentive to do, to do well, right, even on, on that side. So, that's the dynamic that we find ourselves in. So, the thought was, well, we got to look at something different, you know, barring just making massive plan design changes. One of the things that we, we wanted to be thoughtful of is, well, when's the last time we've made changes, right? I think that's important, you know, to look at from a historical perspective, what have employees experienced previously there? And that's what we're listing on this page. So, the last time that deductibles, you know, plan design, so deductibles, your co-insurance, your copays have adjusted, that was in 2019. And kind of some slight, slight tweaks, the maximum out-of-pocket on the HSA plan increased. And then on the other plans, the ER and imaging copays increased, and then inpatient outpatient were made deductible expenses. So, if you go to the hospital, deductible. And the logic of, why would you make plan design changes over and above charging more for a plan and right, wrong, or different would be, well, if I increase the cost out of everyone's paycheck by a certain percentage, everyone pays it. I don't, you know, whether I utilize healthcare or I don't, we all pay it. If there's a plan design change or a happy medium, well, if I don't use the plan, I don't, right, I don't feel the burden of that. I have the exposure. If something happens, right, the risk is there, but I don't have the burden of that. In terms of increased contributions, so this would be amounts, right, paid. And the last time employees had an increase to their paycheck was 2018. And, excuse me, increased their paycheck costs, not what their compensation is, but what comes out of their paycheck. Well, healthcare was 2018. And when the board made, you know, their, that contribution, that was back in, well, I guess it was an increase, that'd be the decrease in contribution. It dialed it back in 2022. So, you see, I put some notes here on the right-hand side. The board's contribution went from 620 per head to 787 in February '19. And then it reduced back to 708 on July of 2021. And then finally, what have we done to reduce the cost of care there? And I think this would even be more transformational than some of these other items, is the clinic was put in in 2011. And then a small, you know, kind of secondary, secondary optional surgical benefit for employees, Surgery Plus was, was put in, really awarded in 2022, but live in 2023. And all this has a leveraged, has a bit of a leveraged impact, right? If plan design changes stay static, if we, if inflation's real and plan changes stay static and costs stay static, right, then when kind of this alligator mouth action kind of happens and it, and it, and it ends up levering up.
One other thing I want to touch on while, while we're still on that slide was the, in addition to the clinics and Surgery Plus, we also did the Express Grips. We carved out the Pharmacy Benefit Manager. And obviously, RX is our second-highest cost. So, we, we've already kind of tackled that probably as aggressively as we can. And they help bring back rebates on drugs and get different negotiated rates and things. So, that was one of the, the low-hanging fruit that, actually, Lauren went after that, and that, that's helped. And I don't know the numbers, but it's definitely dropped that spend for sure.
Yeah, I would say it's avoided, when we do analysis, it's avoided costs. But going back to the, we're buying more bread. We got people on specialty drugs, people that are, you know, out there that weren't there. So, okay, so, the need for an RFP, what did we ultimately, you know, agree upon, right? And, and one of the things we talked about was, well, should we just do a broader RFP with, meaning, you know, United can respond and Cigna and so on and so forth? And we have lots of business with all those various carriers there. But it wasn't going to make a, say, a meaningful difference on what we're trying to tackle there. As a general, I don't paint in broad strokes here, rule of thumb, we see those carrier discounts be between, you know, 2% to 3%, 2% to 4%, meaning, so you move from one to another, maybe you'll save that much. And typically speaking, again, you know, we tend to see Blue Cross, you know, have a slight edge in more rural markets. And albeit, Lake County is now more, my in-laws live out here, my wife grew up here. It's, I think it's now half suburban, half, you know, rural as it relates to, right, particularly Claremont Market. But, you know, as a general rule, they tend to show, you know, show well. So, the thought was, well, what do we, what do we need to do here? Well, we can, and there's a resurgence, or certain is the right word, but a trend in the market to say, well, look, who, who's ultimately the claims payer, right? Oftentimes, Blue Cross and United are, well, we're the, we're the claims payer. Well, no, you're not. Either claims administrator, Lake County Schools, they're the claims payers. They're the ones that are writing the check. And if you were to approach a carrier and say, well, we want to design a network, United Healthcare, anyone, around this provider system, and we want to negotiate a better deal because we're going to carve out maybe these providers, they'd say, no, you can't do that. And the reason why is because it violates their, their PPO contracts. Their contracts state, you got to have, you know, this wide, broad-based network there. So, going to this third, or second item here, if we're going to reduce the cost of care, we need to align employees with more optimal providers, you know, pay less on a unit cost basis, right? We just, it's, we don't really talk about that with healthcare because the buying process is just so murky. But pay less on a unit cost basis. And then reward employees for making smart decisions. I think, in any other purchasing process you make as an individual consumer, I make on a daily basis, there's, you know, there's risk reward for certain things. There's, you know, I'm rewarded for shopping around. But, you know, in healthcare, if specialist, if the copay is 100 bucks, it's 100 bucks regardless of where I go, even though the backend cost could be dramatically different there. So, the idea was, you know, how do we, you know, solve...
Josh, before we... And I might be getting a little bit ahead of you, so if you're going to get to it, you can feel free to stop me. But on point A, align employees with more optimal providers. What does that mean? Is that, are we narrowing networks? Are we...
Yeah.
Disrupting some physicians? Like, what's, how are you going to achieve that?
Yep.
It's just a, it's a rosy way to put that. And I just want to make sure we, we understand what that is.
Yeah. So, they're correct. Yeah. So, we're, we're narrowing the network there. And I will, central Florida, you know, is, is a bit, I mean, you can even maybe even asterisk that. What's unique about, you have Orlando Health, you have Advent, and then you have Shands right here. In many parts of the country, you, you have a really good system and then kind of not very low-tier. We're advantaged to an extent that both Orlando and Advent are really top-tier providers. So, I do want to just maybe clarify. I'm not suggesting that, you know, one particular provider is suboptimal. You look at scores, everything, great. That'd be very expensive as well, which we can talk about a bit later on.
And that's also based on outcome. And that's also based on outcomes too. Like, so all the selection of these providers is outcomes driven. So theoretically, even if a doctor's more expensive, if you don't have as much follow-on care or complications, you save money there. So that's kind of why that.
Yeah, actually, thanks, Rob. I'm glad you brought that up. So let me not to get, well, I'm going to talk about how one of the networks was created that I think will more further answer that that piece. All right. So here's the RFP process and timeline. The we did obtain agreement from the insurance committee that was back in November that, yes, we want to go forward and at least, right, it's RFP, we're not committing to doing anything, that's how the language, right, is written there. It was released in December 14th, due date, you know, kind of mid-ish 2023. We did initial results February 8th. Then that we shortlisted from there, finalist meetings on February 23rd. Then we reconvened as a group and then further shortlisted on 2028, had it down to to two providers with the final provider, you know, being an organization called, you know, HPI or Health Plans Inc. And I'll get into how the network works here, but as again, clarify, make sure we're all clear, as an option alongside Florida Blue. So anyone who has family in California or is from there knows that Kaiser is a very prominent, you know, provider that sometimes is provided as an option, so similar to that. So let's talk about, you know, how this will work because what the heck is right, you know, Health Plans Inc. or or HPI? So they're actually, they're, they would be the claims administrator. So Blue Cross is the administrator and they're the network, right? So they're they're one and the same. HPI is the claims administrator, which means that they will effectively do what Lake County Schools tells them, we want to configure the plan this way, we want to add different providers in a certain market. They'll administer the claims as as you ultimately tell them to. You know, they're headquartered out of the Northeast, owned by Harvard Pilgrim, which is a large, you know, benefits or insurance organization up there, do a lot with it. We've got public entities, so City of Boston's a client, you know, City of Savannah is a group, SEIU was a client before up in Boston before they merged in, so do a lot within the public space as well. So they're they're the administrator, they're the one that are ultimately going to be paying the claims. The way that the network is going to be structured is we have what we're calling kind of primary network and secondary. So the primary network is EHN or Employer's Health Network. So that's going to include Orlando Health and their clinically integrated network along with Shands, which is, right, Villages, Leesburg, Regional, and UF. Going back to the optimal provider piece, so it's not just Orlando Health doctors, it's doctors that are, they call it the SIN, Clinically Integrated Network, CIN. What many healthcare organizations, the way they're rewarded on their Medicare business or for their accountable care organization is you're a patient at XYZ Hospital and they are accountable for your for your care, they get rewarded based on health outcomes, the hospital does. They may get a bonus based on ultimately reducing the cost of care. So Orlando Health has what they call their clinically integrated network, which means that you're a you're a doctor, but you're not owned by Orlando Health, but you're within you're within their SIN. And they need to do that, right, to have outreach in the various markets that they serve facilities, but maybe don't have W2 employees. So I share that simply to state, it's not just Orlando Health doctors, it's doctors that are affiliated with them that are in their their clinically integrated network. So that's the that's the primary network, more what we would call, right, that kind of, you use this term, right, more narrow.
So Josh, to that point, so with with this option here, Advent Health would not be covered. Waterman, a large hospital two miles from here, would not be covered.
It would not be considered in network contracted. Yep. Contracted, correct.
Whatever else.
Correct. And we've put together, I don't have it in here, but various, that's going to be a key key aspect of communication, right, is to, if you're in love with your Advent doctor
To Kim's point, we need to do a real good job of communicating that.
Right, then then this may not be for you. We'll cost benefit analysis on what makes, you know, the, and I don't know if secondary network's the right choice of words, but the other network is PHCS on the physicians. So meaning, let's say you're someone who your doctor's not in the ZHN network, right? Because it, right, that's more limited, right? You have Shands, you have, right, the Orlando Health and a little bit broader than that. So PHCS is 80% match to Florida Blue, not 100, but 80% right, match to Florida Blue. We did. That's also in network contracted. So you go there, you pay your copay, right, off you go there, okay? So those people are totally fine. Where, and then this last piece that I am going to spend some time on here is, well, what happens if I want to pick this plan, but I don't want to have my surgery at an Orlando Health facility? I don't want to have my knee deal at Shands or or somewhere else. Well, how do I how do I ultimately, you know, get coverage? So the way that works is each, you know, as you, if anyone's ever had a surgery today or had to have an image, you go what through called a pre-certification process, which is, well, does this person meet, you know, the requirements, right, to have this particular, you have this particular procedure done? No different here, you go through pre-certification process. If you're not aligned or going to this bullet number two up here, the ZHN network, and you're saying, well, I want to have it at Advent or somewhere else, part of the pre-certification process is is through an organization called HST. So they're what's called a reference-based pricing vendor. So reference-based pricing is a way of, if you look at healthcare, going back to what I said before, is, well, Blue Cross has a discount off of certain charges, so does United. Reference-based pricing is, that's a bottom-down or a top-up approach, reference-based pricing's the other way around. We're going to go cost plus, basically. And the reference in this case is Medicare. All hospitals accept Medicare. So reference-based pricing is saying, well, we're going to pay you XYZ facility Medicare plus 40% or Medicare plus 60%, which is a 40 to whatever percent on top of what Medicare is, okay? The 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 rub, and by the way, the way this whole thing will be communicated is really we want most people falling in kind of bucket two or three. You're all on board with Orlando Health, the clinically integrated network, et cetera. But if you're someone who, you know, wants to go where you want to go and your doctor's in PHCS and you're okay with the reference-based pricing vendor scheduling your surgery, they'll pre-negotiate the surgery payment upfront, so the doctor has, you know, already automatically agreed, you know, that I'm going to see, you know, one of your employees there, and they've agreed upon payment, and they can go in there, okay? Where the rub happens is someone schedules a visit, has the surgery, not in Orlando Health, not at Shands, they did it at at an Advent. And because they're not, Advent is not contracted, they have no obligation to accept said payment. When the reference-based pricing vendor goes to reprice the claim and make payment, there may be a negotiation process. Advent may say, well, you just, you paid me 50 grand and I want 75, I want 100. So part of the service with that provider is to advocate for the employee that, hey, if you get a bill, send that to us, we'll negotiate from them. And part of their scheduling process is a tool that shows the acceptance rate on the various providers throughout the area, so they know who's going to be more willing to accept payment or not. And again, we'll negotiate that upfront. Where it gets squirrely is someone, you know, doesn't go through the process, which in a way, isn't demonstrably different from how it works today. If someone didn't go through the pre-cert process, they didn't do right what they needed to do there, they may have claims issues on the backend there. So I'm going to pause for a second because that was a good bit, but I saw heads nodding that some folks were.
I want to tack on a little more on the reference-based pricing because this stuff was all new to me, obviously. Apparently, hospitals don't actually have real prices for anything. They decide, hey, your knee replacement costs us $16 million to do a knee replacement. Like, no, it costs about $15,000 between the expendables and the knee part. But then they negotiate themselves down and start making deals with Blue Cross and everything else, and that's where you get your kickbacks and all those other things that come out of the plan savings. This, like, like you said, goes the other way, right? It costs $15,000 to do this knee surgery. Medicare says, we'll pay you 20,000 for your time in trouble. We tack on an amount over top of Medicare, whatever we negotiate, in this case, 40%. And as long as that's acceptable to them, we're good to go. Where the, like you said, the tiny sliver and based on all the numbers looked at, it was like about a percent or 2%.
About 2%, 2% of, and thanks, Rob, 2% that fall into bucket number four will end up getting kicked back and having prolonged negotiations, 2% of claims, not.
And to be clear, that's not negotiation between the member and the employee and whoever, Advent Health. That's, hey, I got this bill, what do I do with it? You send it into, in HPI's case, they call it pathways. It's basically a concierge service, they take it, okay, and they go fight that fight, and it runs off. They'll probably get hate mail for a few months and then it'll stop because they're fighting in the background, they don't have to do anything except send the bills in. That that's the 2% worst-case scenario. And the other piece of this that it's not on here is they basically have a cash pay that HST does in the background. So as a strong bully negotiating tool, they can say, shut up and take this money, here's cash today. And that stops the whole process and short-circuits it in most cases, according to them. Obviously, we don't have the experience to validate that yet, but that's that's the plan.
Well, yeah, I think the validation, how many of you have ever, you gone to the pharmacy and the cash rate was cheaper than insurance? Or you go to an MRI and you say, I'll give you $300 today, and they take it, but your copay is is higher? It's the same, the same logic here, by paying the providers sooner, not having to deal with all the other nonsense of insurance.
Oh, this is bouncing around. Is it affecting the person's credit at all?
No.
Are they reporting to the credit agency?
No, that's part of, they have, HST has a program in there that takes that off the employee's credit piece, yep.
This seems very complicated to me, guys.
It is extremely complicated.
Sorry.
What? All right. Let's, you want to jump to the plans or you want to keep going through?
Oh, this is so exciting.
We're going to take a vote after what's better, the construction.
Whatever's the shortest path. So if we go into the plan, that'd be good.
Yeah, let's take a look at the plans. I think we have more in-depth questions. Yeah, some of the other. Okay, so we're going to jump to, page number's on your bottom right-hand side, you're going to go to 15, you're going to, yeah, you're going to go to 15. Here, okay? All right, so these are the plan designs that were developed for 2023, 2024. So the left-hand side is what you have today. The right-hand side is what we're we're proposing for September and beyond. The, you can see the enrolled employees are actually on the bottom row there, if you want to see what employees are on each plan. With the exception of that HSA plan, it's pretty much a third, third, and a third as far as the distribution of employees. You can see the the bottom side there, okay? So what we're what we're looking at, and I'm going to kind of walk you through, well, why don't we just offer this? Why, you know, is there a path? And, you know, why don't we just offer this as a fifth plan alongside? And that was certainly something that was that was up for discussion. The the challenge is, by offering as a fifth plan, the way that the employee rates are structured as it relates to CBA and some other pieces, there'd be no material reason for someone to pick that because it would be similar cost to some of the other plans and why. If I'm going to pick a plan that has a more narrow network, I need to have a reason to do it, right? Either out of my paycheck or or plan design. So if you look on the right-hand side, what we did, anything in green is better, anything in red, not as good, right? I think those folks get that. So $0 deductible there. So if someone who, very cost-conscious, doesn't want to have, take on that exposure, totally agree what Kim said about people having bigger deductibles and all that, so put $0 deductible on this plan. The maximum out of pocket is the lowest of all the plans there. And that was done intentionally, both in terms of, hey, if you're going to take on a more narrow network, I'm not going to take on a bigger deductible in exchange for doing that, that would be completely unintuitive. And then two, you know, based on, you know, the claims repricing that we did, meaning we had all the claims repriced, if it flowed into the NIS network, if it was done this way, we want some of our sicker people in this plan. Like, I'd rather reduce the deductible like we did here and maybe, you know, we took on an extra 500 bucks by the deductible going from 500 to zero and, you know, save 15% on, you know, on that high-cost claimant, on those real big dollars there, right? And then you'll notice there's no, there's no deductible, there's no co-insurance, there's copays for everything. Employees understand copays there, and that's not a criticism of employees, it's just no other world is there, well, I got to make this deductible, then I got to pay a co-insurance. If you tell me what $1,000 means, I know what $1,000 means, I can get that and understand that, you know, quite easily there. Okay. So that that what ends up happening, just to make sure everyone's on the same page, right, this, and the plan names are somewhat similar, but that far left-hand plan, that 3359 plan, ends up being eliminated. So that $500 deductible plan, right, you see that goes away. And then the 3559 plan, the deductible goes up from 750 to 1,000, and then 2250 to 3,000 as does the the max out of pocket. And the reason, you know, anyways, between this and another scenario was was to create more spread between the plans. If the plans ends up being similar, you end up, you know, confusing folks as to which plan makes the most sense. What's that?
And the gap, but why are we, so we adjusted those numbers specifically to adjust the bottom dollar for the the claims cost, total claims cost, and that, I think it was, what, about 900,000? We moved it just by bumping that one number on the max out of pocket.
Yeah, I think it's worth noting, it's not a secret, but the the board contribution is tied to the 3559 plan as it relates to both CBAs. It's set at 95% of that plan.
The board is paying 95% of the premium.
For the single, for single coverage. You, your budget is 95%.
Thank you, I had no idea.
Of the single coverage, and that's in both of the CBAs. So if if nothing happens to that plan, then the costs go up, yours, right? That's the way that the contract.
Would employees want to pay more? If they're if they're only paying 5% now, would they not want to keep their coverage like it is and pay the five points?
Well, I think, well, it's a good question because, right, if you look at the way it's structured, you know, if costs go up a lot, if I'm only paying 5% of that, it really impacts me not very significantly, right? As an end user. I think what the committee, and I don't want to speak on behalf of committee, but the feeling I got from conversations there was that, well, you know, budgets aren't endless and we're willing to, you know, take on maybe this higher deductible here, put this plan in with the intent of creating further sustainability so that, you know, as it relates to just other aspects of, you know, their total compensation or anything else.
You guys really confuse me with these conversations, I'm sorry. But if I go to the HPI plan.
Yep.
With the no deductible, no whatever.
Yep.
Is the district going to cover all the costs or the?
No, if you go, actually, go to the next slide, slide 16 there. So you'll see the 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 3559 plan, that's the 81661. I don't know if I have a, that, I don't want to mess that up. You see the eight, on the far right-hand side, where it says 81661, about three columns to the left.
Which one?
On the, where it says renewal with ES, with Essar, CBA formula. Under the total, go down about a third, 81661. We're saying that's the, that's the, that's the rate, that will be the rate for that 3559 plan. You're paying, that board contribution's at 95%, it's $775.78. And you'll see that carries all the way down regardless, because that's where you got, you all have set what your budget is. To answer your, I think, maybe this was your question, Bill, we're saying the HPI plan would be 775.78, so in that case, the employee would pay zero. So so if you look at what the employee's decision is, well, I can stick with the Blue Cross plan that now has $1,000 deductible, I can pay $40.83 a month, these are monthly rates here, or I can choose a plan with no deductible for for free, not free, but free to them, right, $0. And they still have two other plans of Blue Cross that are at at no cost as well.
Josh, on slide 16, without getting too deep in the weeds, generally speaking, how are you handling the migration on these estimated numbers with eliminating the one plan and then how we're just getting to the active enrollees for the sake of getting to these aggregate numbers?
Yeah, it's a good question. effectively, we'll get 40 to 50%. And I say, zero chance that's happening. Like, it's just not, not in first year, because just, it's, you know, there. So I believe, I believe we migrated, I think we looked at 15% is what we've looked at. Now, as it relates to board spend, we could put everyone in the HPI plan under this scenario, and it won't make a lick of difference, because your rate is that 77578. So the numbers, outside of us thinking we're just going to have just a lot of families join the plan, even that wouldn't even, it mean, what will happen, the total number will make a difference, that 48,477, right, where people go, but the board amount will be static. To be clear, you're self-funded, the board budget, right, will be, will be static. Same to your question there?
One other thing on the penetration there. So when I was first introduced this idea, I was actually at a meeting with Osceola Schools' manager, she and I are keeping communication lots of different things. And when they started it, they, you know, it had some legs, but it wasn't in any way penetrating to the level that it makes a huge difference. Three years in, they have about 90% of their employees in the TPA model network, so.
I think that for an independent businessman, we just went through this whole insurance thing, and it is very complicated. And I hate talking about it here, and I really hate talking about it in my business.
My apologies.
But, yeah, thank you. But one of the things that, which seems to be the model, is if my employees, if they call this group, and they then set up the surgery, then there's no deductible. If they then go on their own, though, and don't make the contact, then they've got to pay whatever it is.
And to your point, that's the communication piece, and so we actually have a whole, we had a meeting just the other day, just specifically on getting out there and explaining it to people. And they don't need any of this, right? They have one phone number to call, and they have a person that does the work for them. Like, from a user experience level, it's pretty straightforward, probably more straightforward than Blue Cross is.
Yeah, I think the big ping at the employees is just making sure they're clear on, you know, what the network.
But is the bottom line, you're adding this, you're going to offer our employees the other, they can stay with Blue Cross if they want to?
Yep, plans will be different.
Is that the deal?
Yes, sir. The plans will be different, though, if you saw.
But if you stay with Blue Cross, it's going to cost you more. Is that right?
Correct.
Yes.
And you'll have a higher deductible than you had prior.
Yep. Obviously, there, that's the higher-cost plan, so it's skin in the game, that's the bottom line.
Well, I think at this point, too, I certainly appreciate the thought and the effort that's gone into this, so thank you and your team for that. What I'm still struggling with is just the idea, I've got no issues with the theory of raising deductibles and trying to change behavior, because ultimately, that's what we need to do in certain cases. But it's just, I don't know, the thought of eliminating Advent as a cover party is really weighing on me, and just the service we're giving to our employees, we're really more pushing them to Leesburg and Claremont at that point. Not that there's another provider scattered throughout the county, but we're a big county. Geography is challenging in some ways, and getting from point A to point B, and just eliminating that avenue is a challenge for me.
Well, I think, a couple of things to that, and I certainly appreciate that. It'd be great if we could offer all the providers at a real, real low cost, and then we wouldn't be having these conversations, right? As it relates to, and one, what I'm going to say, you're going to say, yeah, I get that, but that, one, that's why it's an option, why we didn't just totally, like, we have some organizations that are just looking at wholesale, make changes. That's an approach, rip the Band-Aid off, but it's disruptive, right? So one, doing that as an option. The other piece, as we talk about what the network is, remember that it's not just that employers' health network, which is the Orlando Health Network and the Shands, it's the PHCS Network, which is 80% of it, which spans, which is all over. So again, that person, the Advent, where the Advent issue's going to come into play is someone who is looking to have, you know, procedure or surgery, and expand on that with the confidence that it's a contracted rate, right? If they're willing to go through the process and have a procedure done, and they negotiate upfront payment with Advent, and Advent's good, then kind of, right, off we go there. We can't look an employee in the eye and say, oh, yeah, you can go to Advent, totally fine, and do that, right? There's a process that they would need to go through there. And we just want to be thoughtful that an employee who's buying this, because that's what they're doing, they're making an election, that's irrevocable, really, at point of open enrollment, that they understand, you know, what they're getting.
And I want to add one thing to that. The other piece for kind of the master, like, looking at the whole county, to your point, we have clinics dispersed throughout the county, too. You know, we have the Eustis Clinic Wellness Center. And Mr. Dodd, you mentioned that, you know, it seems like sometimes it's not of the highest quality or caliber compared to other medical institutions. And I understand the perception, I mean, it can't call anything what it is, it's a trailer. So, and looking to the future of improving that aesthetic, and we're getting new providers right now, they're onboarding younger, more agile, more interested in patient care, not just interested in a nine-to-five that's consistent. So really, improving the image and the quality of that care can kind of fill those gaps in the geography. You know, if you can be seen in Eustis, now you've covered where theoretically somebody might have done primary care right around the Advent system. So, and again, if there's somebody that, I have my doctorate at Waterman Hospital, I will see no one else, stay with one of the Blue Plans, please, because you're not going to be happy in the TPA model.
I have a couple of questions. You mentioned Osceola County.
Yes.
What does the layout look like in terms of, because on the north end of the county, especially in the Eustis-Tverries area, Advent is solid. Does Osceola compare with Lake in terms of having those facilities? I guess what I'm asking is, when you tell me that Osceola now has 90% or 80, or whatever you said, are we comparing apples to apples, or are you just comparing a county to a county? Is the layout the same?
I'm comparing the principle of the rollout, right? If, to your question, no. Orlando Health has much more presence than Osceola, which is why it was easy for them to do it. But it took them three years to get there. It was education, it was people joining and liking the experience, and then passing that along to their coworkers and, you know, growing at that naturally, versus the Band-Aid method, which would get it out there, but it would be an utter disaster, and that's not what anybody wants, so.
I have a serious concern about how the employees are going to be educated. I have a grave concern about that. I want to hear what your plan is for educating them and helping them to understand, because if it is the presentation that we heard today?
No.
Okay.
No, not at all.
Okay. So how are we going to educate these people?
Absolutely. So in our discussion, we're going to, before the end of this year, because it doesn't matter what happens over the summer, about a third, if anybody, will hear it out of the population, we're going to have in-person, in the north, and in-person in the south, discussion specifically regarding, you know, both open enrollment in general, like, you know, every year this happens. This year, we have this exciting new option, this is what it looks like, here's limitations, here are the people that it would most benefit, and if you're one of these other people, maybe don't choose that, and just kind of get that message started. Over the summer, we have both digital and print campaign that's going to go out to everybody, and for people that are 247 employees that are here all summer, we're going to have more personal interaction in services, both for custodial and food service and transportation, you know, get down to the ground level, and for those touchpoints, both my staff, Josh will have a representative, and then HPI will have their people there as well, since they're the experts on this massive pile of information. And obviously, we'll tell them to tailor information to what's useful to the end user, right? What's it going to cost me? What do I get for my money? Those kind of straightforward questions. And then, right before open enrollment, or at the beginning there in August, just full-on blitz, again, within persons, north and south, and then we have, every year, we have a huge digital campaign, so like, you know, it's going out, email, phone, I can't remember if they do a mailer or not normally, but we're going to be including every possible way we can get out there, so, and this is my, you know, my challenge, right? Like, I have to do this, because otherwise it won't work.
Yeah. I would just remind you that while most of us have come into the technological age, there are a lot of cafeteria workers, bus monitors, custodians, who have not. So when you tell me you're going to send emails, you're going to do it via phone, I still have to wonder if you're going to reach them at the level they need you to reach them in order for them to make an educated decision about this. I just, I shudder to think, how many of them are going to make a choice, not fully understanding what they're choosing? And then they're going to have a health crisis, and it's not going to be what they expect, and it's going to, you know, be very devastating to them. I think that's my biggest, my gravest concern about it. I also share Tyler's concern that, you know, and I understand why, but I just think that there are a lot of people that are going to be adversely affected, even if it's a mental thing. And I get what you're saying, that, you know, you need to look at it in terms of making smarter decisions. But, you know, people have their doctors that they've had for 20 years, and it's going to be a hard thing for them to switch.
But not all of them will have to.
Right, I understand.
Okay.
But I guess, I know one of the questions is going to be, why do I have to, why do I have to make a decision? Why are you forcing this? I fear that already. I have people that email me weekly about the clinic. I mean, it's just, I have standard people that I know they're going to email me, so I'm, you know, it's Tuesday, so they email me. And I just see them having some serious, I think they're going to have a difficult time with this.
So I wanted to mention one thing that didn't come up, because like, we've got enough here, but the fund balance issue, that's the why. Negative $11 million if we do nothing, or 9 million, is it 9 million?
Yeah.
We have to make it up somewhere, and even in the most aggressive version of this, we still fall short. We're still negative, but it gets us on a trend, and he keeps saying the word sustainability, that was a big discussion here, is how can we afford healthcare going forward? Because the fluctuation, bringing the more board money in and bringing it back out, it's not sustainable. It kills us. I mean, we're paying, what is it, 40 million out of the boards?
Yeah, maybe we'll go to slide 13.
That's the, that's the part that I'm missing.
We skipped over.
Is how are you really interested in the fund balance, I guess, through all this gyration? Seems like the only way you do it is raise the, I mean, you could do this HPI option, but if everyone could stay where they are, they've got to pay more, right?
Right, because you can't reduce the cost on the Blue Cross model. On this model, we can. So versus, was it 12% increase, and they do seven or something like that? I'm not, I'm not a numbers guy, that's why you're sitting here.
Yeah, so the, what we have here on slide 13 is showing, we did it with and without, with and without the ESER money. So what we're listed on this page is, if we did nothing, just stayed put, status quo, to make sure that we ended up, and this is a break even, so this isn't replenishing fund balance, this is making sure that we don't end up in a deficit, right, for next plan year. We're projecting a 24% increase to the budget, right, which, if you go back to those prior slides, really, on the conversation, well, if we're 17% over budget today, and the budget, right, stays static, the number can track. With the ESER funds, which was about, you know, $4.7 million there, that 24% drops down, you know, to the 14.3% there. Then the far-right-hand side says, well, shoot, that means we've still got to come up with 14.3%, you know, what do we do to solve that? Well, that's where, in the top right-hand side, the, you know, the funding comes into play. You see that, and that funding, that 935 is a combination between the board and employees, you know, out of their paycheck. Where some of the savings comes in, and, Bill, I think this might be your question, which is just a dynamic to how the CBA is set up, is if you go to slide 14, this is no plan changes with ESER money. So no plan changes, meaning we just kind of go on our normal path here. And we could still, by the way, this option, you could still offer HPI alongside, but meaning no changes to Blue Cross. We don't eliminate the plan, we don't increase the deductible on the one plan there. You can see the board contribution's set at 80439, which is about, you know, a million and change, close to $2 million difference there. So a lot of, I think there's two, there's two components of savings. There's, well, one, what's our budget savings? What do we budget to? That's the board contribution, and that's stuck at 95% of that base plan, based on the contract. So whether we put an HPI or not, it doesn't impact that number. The other savings is, if we can get employees into a plan, and into a network and a dynamic where we're paying less for healthcare, then we can create savings on, instead of that claim being $100,000, it's $85,000 there, which it doesn't, which when your contribution is set at a Blue Cross plan, doesn't, you know, jump right out at the page at you because of the way the contract is structured, but more and more people go there, and it's like, well, I paid $0 out of my paycheck, I have no deductible, and I'm okay with this network piece, then, then we can kind of create a little bit of a flywheel that puts us on a path to sustainability. And maybe, this kind of, if you don't mind, as it relates, one piece on the communications front, 100% agree, if we expect to send out emails and postcards and think, we did our job, zero chance that's going to be effective. That's why Rob and I spend a lot of time talking about onsite meetings, and then also, we've got an HPI's agreement, some of those will be based on, when we can get, you know, contract up and running, to have their phone lines be open three weeks prior to open enrollment. Because the other dynamic that is unique with Lake Schools is your benefits start 9/1, people come back from summer, and that later July type piece. So getting people communicated early and often, before summer, hey, this is coming, be on the lookout, here's, let's go over it with you now, you don't have to make any changes, but we want to let this, you know, marinate for you a little bit, so you understand it, then send out communications during the summer, and then people can have a conversation with someone, because that's what I want to know. I mean, the deductible and the cost is nice, but I want to know, is Dr. Jones in the network? He is, okay, great. Well, is Dr. Smith in?
Right, that's what they want to know.
Is Dr. Smith in? Well, no, she's not in.
That's the only thing they want to know.
She's not in the network. Okay, well, how does that work? Well, let us look up maybe some other doctors, or maybe they're in this other network, right? So that's the conversation that they want to have, which is why we've gotten their commitment to open it up.
In order for that piece to bind, would they pay, if they're paying nothing, would they agree to pay something? Because it's all got to start with the fund balance. This board, our responsibility is to be responsible, right?
Absolutely.
But also, if you have a, these plans become very personal, and if it were the difference between changing to HPI, or whatever it's called, or staying where I am, where I'm paying nothing, would I pay 50 bucks a month, or 100 bucks a month? And I will tell you that in today's world, that would be a super deal, and keep it at whatever the deductible was. Everything's the same, except now, instead of being free, you got to pay something. Did that come up as a discussion?
You're, I want to make sure I understand. You're saying pay something for the HPI plan, or pay something for the?
No, no, no. If I were in, well, I am in that seat, because I'm an employer.
Right.
But have the HPI plan, that would be, that would keep everything at zero. You pay nothing.
Yep.
If you want to stay where you were, and it was zero, now it is whatever that number is.
Yeah, no, there's an employee contribution on all the plans.
Oh, I thought y'all had it zero.
No, there's, there's.
Zero deductible.
The one that's 1,500.
The 577.
$1,500 deductible is a free one right now, right?
Yep.
So there is still a plan, I think what you're saying, Bill.
Did we have a plan the day that was zero?
Yes, you do.
Okay, but that's the plan that's going away?
No.
No, that one's staying.
Okay.
That's the end.
It's zero, and now what is it going to cost to be part of that one?
That one's staying.
Still zero.
That one's staying zero. The plan that's here, let me, will this, here?
Still zero if you're an employee.
Only.
You talking about 3559?
What's interesting, so, the plan that most people are in today, the two plans that most people are in today, they're paying something for it. They are paying. Yeah, so the majority, this is easier to see, and you can't see it on the screen, that far-left-hand plan, that $500 deductible plan, you have 1,530 people in that plan, they're paying $63.58 a month to be in that plan. So what that, you could look at that in one or two ways. You could look at that and say, 1,530 people have made the decision that they'd rather have a lower deductible and pay something for it in exchange for that. There's also buyers that just.
And this one goes away, right?
Yes, sir.
Oh, no, it raises.
No, that one goes away.
Oh, it goes away. But what would that one cost the employee? Since that's the second largest participation.
We did have that modeled. It was close to, was it 100? It was, it was, hold on one second, I'll tell you.
63 now, and it would be?
75, 771 times, 78, 10 minus 775. In, in the one where we increased the deductible, not that plan, but in that, the one where the board contribution's 775, that employee now pays $103. They go from 6358 to 1,000. that employee now pays $103. They go from 6358 to 103.
It's in the new with $1,000 deductible?
It's, it's in.
That's the plan that goes away.
It is, but that was what your question was, wasn't it?
If that plan stayed, that's what they would pay.
It would be $103.
If that plan stayed.
If it stayed, it'd be 100.
It'd be 100. On, if we look at slide 16, and it matters because the board contribution's impactful to what the employee pays, where the board's contribution's at 775, that, the plan that we're, says we're eliminating, okay? That, those employees would pay $103.94. They're currently paying 6358 for single, for single coverage.
Excuse me just one second.
So, so this, this.
For those that are affected, can I get, can we hear an opinion from the? You know, would they pay $103?
I don't believe they could afford it by people.
Got it.
They, they wouldn't afford it, no.
They wouldn't.
Actually, then you're paying more than what you would with a $500 deductible, if you think about it in, in monthly terms.
Okay, then y'all did good by eliminating it, I guess.
They could save the $40 a month.
Yeah, you just picked the higher plan because it would work out cheaper because of the deductible, even if you had to pay the whole deductible.
If you wanted to save affordably, yes. Going higher would actually save you money.
That's always the case. You got to, it's got to come from somewhere. And it comes from the deductible.
Yeah.
And at my company, we're 2,500 right now.
And I think too, regardless of the plan design changes, because again, we can talk about this for hours, and there's certainly been a lot of thought that goes into this. My concern at this point is now the use of the ESER dollars. And not that I don't think this is worthy for those to go there. But if we're throwing non-recurring dollars to shore this up now, what do we do next year? What happens if we, we don't get there? It just, that, that scares the heck out of me.
So I, I want to speak directly to that. So that, that, that's the sustainable piece of this. And, and the hope that we can launch this HPI thing and people really like it and they, they, you know, start getting better penetration. As that grows, we're beating the market on the cost of healthcare. And so that non-repeating money, you know, over time, won't, won't matter anymore because we're saving that $4 million or whatever it is to make up the difference. Can I tell you we're going to get there in two years? I have no idea. But, but that's the, that's the idea.
It's, yeah, it's a Band-Aid. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a one-time, but, but that was something our actuaries and we talked about that we can't keep. Which in a way is, you know, Lake Schools has done that, you know, before, which is why employee costs have stayed the same, is there's been a deficit, the board's caught in and, and made up the difference, which, you know, creates a bigger gap, right?
But ultimately, with you feeding in using the ESER, you could rip the Band-Aid off if it was necessary because you'd only have a track record of a couple of years of this HPI.
You're saying we wouldn't need that money anymore, or are you saying that we could keep feeding it?
I'm saying that the ESER dollars aren't forever dollars.
No, absolutely not. This is a one, one hitter. Yeah.
Yeah, my understanding is that F47 is a one-time deal, which when we look at healthcare projection, and I just want to be realistic. Like, I don't, I don't see that there's a world where we're sitting here next year and saying, well, we offset all that ESER because we have 4,500 people in the plan, right? If, if 1,000 take it, that's less than a third, which I would think that would be, I would view that being very successful in terms of people taking it. And claims are running a two-month lag, so we have, so I just want to clear to the board on that side that, but I think what, what, what Rob is saying there is, well, if we have it and can, it does offset the employee cost too there a little bit as well. So I know we're kind of wearing two hats. We're playing sustainability and making sure that employees aren't, you know, getting jammed.
A fool's errand in the long run, and it's a matter of what happens there. I mean, I certainly would rather kick the can than not kick the can, but at the same time, be careful at what, what that can looks like when you get there.
Pay now or pay later.
Yeah.
It's only getting more expensive.
Right. And, and I hesitate to bring this up, but I think it's important for the record, and also for the state of the insurance industry as a whole on the healthcare side. What we're seeing in the market, your expertise in the market, Gallagher's expertise in the market. We've mentioned Daciola a couple of times. I, I think we need to address that. And I guess my question would be, without getting too deep in the details, Josh, are, are you or anyone on your direct team that works with Lake also involved in that? The Ossio allegations?
No.
Okay. That's important. Thank you.
Yep.
So the only reason this works is because you create enough separation in plans that, or, or because you increase the deductibles significantly, that that drives people to the HPI. That they're going to be saying, goodness, I was on a 500 or a $750 deductible, and I, I don't know that I can handle the $1,000. And so now that's where, that, that's what this relies on.
Yes, if we, if we, if we just simply put HPI alongside the existing construct, and you're telling me, well, it's a $500 difference. Now granted, I think you could make a case that, well, it's $500 plus 100 bucks out of your paycheck per month. But you got people here that are paying $63 a month and are, and are fine with it, or, but yeah, you, you have to have that separation. If there's no meaningful difference, I'm going to, status quo wins unless there's, there's a reason to look at. And, and the reason why, which we had conversations about this in committee, which is, and I think we can look at this and all the conversations we're having here today, and we'll say, well, look, I can do that math, and I'm paying, if I said it was going to go. And the one where nothing changes, that $63 plan goes to 77 bucks a month, which is a lot of, you know, that's a, that's not insignificant, right? That's another $14 a month, but with everything else and inflation, and maybe people are almost happy about that. I'd rather pay less. But, you know, tolerant of that. And then you say, well, look, we got this great plan where you pay zero for it. It's a $0 deductible. If nothing materially happened to my current stat structure, I'm less inclined to look elsewhere. And I guess an example I gave was if, and maybe homeowners is a good example to use, given what the state's been through, you know, past few years on homeowners insurance. You have commercials all the time, save $500 on your homeowners. Well, if my rate stayed the same, I'm probably less inclined to make the call. When my, my rate's going up by $2,500 a year, now all of a sudden, I'm calling agents all over the place to figure out how I can do something different on my homeowners. It's the same concept here. If we stayed static and offered it as an option, my, my current offering's the same. I got to pay a little more. I'm probably not going to pay a lot of attention to it. When something happens to my existing situation, I, and, and there's no way around it. Except people, I don't, I don't know if forced is the right word, but I, I now have to pay attention.
Where did $77 come from? Where's that number?
Slide 14. This was, this was if we just offer, if we didn't make any changes to the plans.
What did it to 103 you told me a minute ago?
That was on, if we, it, it's related to the board contribution.
The 77 is on the 3559, the one that we have, the language that's tied to it, 95 and 5. That's what everything else is driven off of, is that number.
If everything stayed the same, $77.
$77.
But.
But different plan.
We're not dealing with our fund goals then. Is that right?
Well, it does. Your, your cost, your, your board contribution just went up, and it's 107, not 103, sorry. Your, if, if we, everything stayed the same, the board's now paying 804.39.
That works out to be about $6 million.
That's the, no, that's.
That's with no regard to the fund balance.
Correct. That, that gets us at.
That's, that's not even a, you shouldn't even talk about.
Right, that gets us to zero.
That's a crazy conversation.
Yep.
We got to fix this.
Right. And, and that's how we, and that's how we marched through all those scenarios. And, you know, we, we wanted to be at least disruptive as possible while still making meaningful change. And between a lot of these scenarios, there, there wasn't the meaningful change. The juice wasn't worth the squeeze. And so when it came down to, okay, do we do something to increase the deductibles or whatever to make that gap there? If we didn't, we were looking at a projected maybe 190 people joining the HPI plan, which materially saves us no money and makes a whole lot of wasted effort and time on everybody's part. With that gap separation and showing clear choice, there was a better opportunity to get people to be interested in, in the discussion at all, let alone making that choice.
So moving forward with what we have, what if they don't change? Do we have a backup plan?
So with eliminating that plan, we have the 1,500 members that are in that plan. They have to go somewhere because we can't just kick them off the healthcare. We, we wouldn't do that anyway.
Right.
So we can quote default them somewhere until they make an election, right? Because until they open enrollment, they can't change anyway. So in the interim where there, there's nothing, you know, they're kind of out in the ether, we can default them and theoretically, and we haven't finished the conversation, but we would default them to Florida Blue Plan. That way, nobody's caught with their pants down, hey, I didn't know anything about this, and now I can't go to Haven Health. But that, those dollars still exist, right? They shifted from one plan to the next. So by educating, we hope that when it's, hey, your plan's gone, you have to do something, hopefully they'll elect to go to HPI.
Well, you got 1,500 you can market to right now that should go to HPI, right?
Yeah, that's, that's the market, absolutely.
That's your market.
Yes.
Yep. I, I think, well, there's, I think there's going to be two buyers within that market. There's going to be those that, that say, well, I want to go to the plan that's the most expensive because they're in that plan today. And those that say, I want the one with the least deductible. If they want the one with the least deductible, those are going to be the ones that migrate over. But there's also others that just, and.
There's also the co-insurance.
And, and Bill, you probably know this from your business. When you look, you're like, why are these, why are my employees picking this plan? They should be here. There's some that just are gonna, it's, it's an emotional decision for them and they're going to stay Florida Blue.
Yep.
But everyone else is going to probably move to the HPI, because that's kind of what.
I might, and we would normally see something like this snowball as well, right? I don't, like I said, I think if we get 1,000 or so in there, I'd deem that as success. We modeled it as less. Again, it doesn't have an impact on the board contribution because that's static. They're out there.
So to be clear, on scenario four, the one that was approved by the insurance committee, that, the one on this, this color sheet that we've got here of the handout, that also contemplates using the ESER dollars into those.
That's correct.
Those rates in scenario four.
That is correct.
All those scenarios use the ESER dollars, okay.
That's correct. Yeah, and we, and we broke, on, on the, the hand, the binder in front of you, you can see we broke it out separately. So the, the 42,636 is board contribution on active employees, you know, retiree coppers, and then the 4.7 million, that's the ESER.
And the best deal right now is with Florida Blue as far as that manager person.
Yeah.
We have United Healthcare, none of those.
Well, go ahead. I don't see a number, so I think I'm okay. We're doing, a, a benefit of, of what we did is some of these TPAs can access those other networks. They can access United Healthcare's network. United Healthcare will lease it to them for a fee, right? Or they can access a Cigna network. And some of them presented that as an option, just hoping that maybe they could take over, right, the whole thing. And that was not, that would have been cost prohibitive there, which is why we're doing this as an option. So that was a benefit, I guess, to what we did. We had the claims being repriced under United's network and Cigna's and others. And that, that would cost you more money.
And, and I think to, directly to your question about Cigna, Aetna, the others, it, it also showed in the repricing that Florida Blue was actually on the low end in almost every case compared to its peers, not compared to HPI.
Let me just make sure I'm reading this right. Based on the, the increased board's contribution, currently, if I'm looking at slide 16, we, we pay about 38.9 million for a board contribution. This would go to 42.6, right? So that's an increase of about $3.7 million.
Yeah, I would say, clarify, I would say you budget 38.9 because you're, you're self-funded if it's.
Right, right.
I just want to make, yeah.
Sure, sure. So we'd be budgeting $3.7 million more to make these higher contributions.
Correct. And the ESER on top of that. Yes. Yeah, that's, yeah, ESER's on top, yeah.
All right.
That's right.
You know, also thinking about the idea of trying to bring, because this is obviously multiple, multi-faceted formula with lots of different variables. But another component of that is just bringing the healthcare cost down, right? And, and I know that there are many companies out there that offer various incentives for employees and wellness and so on, so forth. Have, have we looked at, have we looked at those from what other companies are doing and thinking about maybe embracing some of them on our own?
So, so we've actually done that to some degree. The Surgery Plus is, is a, a component of that. It, it actually will mirror in a lot of ways what HPI can do. But finding good outcomes for doctors, again, with those less follow-up visits in shorter recovery times, that's how they save money and make money on the savings, quote unquote. But bringing in other places, the, the market for the pharmacy, that's another one where, you know, we're attacking those actual dollars of spend. The clinics will attack, attack those dollars of spend. The only thing left is what Florida Blue has.
No, I, I guess I'm, I'm.
Sorry. I think I know what you're asking, but.
I'm asking about for employee.
Well-being, like.
Well-being.
If I walk a certain amount of steps, I get an incentive.
That's right.
Do my biometrics.
Yeah.
I get an incentive there.
Smoke and all that. Didn't we do all that?
Yeah, or like smoker, non-smoker.
Right. We don't, we don't do any of that, do we?
We, we do that, some of that stuff through the clinics. We have the Know Your Numbers campaigns. We have Flu Clinic Day, Flu Shot.
Right, right. But what does the employee receive as, as an incentive for any of those choices or any of that participation?
Don't we do something with gym membership?
They're not receiving incentive on their contribution. And I think what you're asking, so we have, we do have clients that will say, well, we're going to give you a $25 a month incentive to things, things like that. What we found in our data and looking at is absent, you know, there are success stories, right? This person who had the biometric screening and they were going to have a heart attack the next day. And thank God, right, for that, that saved them. But as a general rule, people are really good at doing things to get stuff. Meaning, I went online, I watched my webinars, that I'm being a little facetious, that apples are good and candy's bad. And I, I joined the walking program and I got my incentive, and then I went back to going there. So meaning, many of the ones that we see aren't sustainable, that said, and I don't know if this is something that, you know, bargained out or not. I think there's a path. We have some of our groups that, hey, if we can, you know, structure something to where every quarter, you need to have a check-in with, you know, if you meet these conditions, we need you to have a check-in with the clinic, or you need to have a check-in with the nurse care, care manager. Or if you log in on your steps, some of them have Bluetooth with gyms and things of that sort, that will give incentives on that end. And some of our groups will increase the employee rate and then bring it back down. That way, it's not, I mean, depends on your point of view if that's an incentive or not.
Yeah, I, I guess I just recall back to my time at Disney, there were various, you know, if your cholesterol was in a certain range, or your BMI was in a certain range, or you're not a smoker, or so on, so forth. There were things that brought your rate down, and.
So that's called an, an out, so, and the, the, it's made, those are harder programs to manage now. It's called an outcomes-based program.
Sure.
Where if my BMI is in a certain range or cholesterol, and if that person is outside that, then what you need to do, and we can spend a whole other session on this, you have to give them a reasonable alternative outcome, reasonable alternative, excuse me, project or what have you there. So that if I, my cholesterol's out, well, okay, I'm still going to pay the lower rate as long as I enroll in the, you know, dietitian program. It doesn't actually mean that my cholesterol ever has to get better. I just now have to jump through some hoops. There, there are people that do get better, right, just to be clear. But it's difficult to say if we roll that out, it's going to have X, Y, Z.
Yeah, I, I don't know what the results are. I just know that there are many companies that do it.
There's definitely.
And there must be a reason they're doing it.
Yes.
Other than we haven't done the analysis on that, right?
Yep.
So, I mean, I would hope that they've, they've done some research to figure out if it is, if there is a benefit analysis to that, or.
Yep.
And, and certainly, you know, healthier employees are, are great. I mean, there's, and the incentive on our end for, maybe they're going to miss fewer days of work, or.
Yep.
So I.
Yeah, it costs them money too, right? Who wants to go to the doctor?
Right.
Or go in the hospital or.
That's inconvenient.
Manage all that.
Yeah. And so, just as I know there are companies that do it, I'm, I'm just surprised that we haven't really looked more seriously at that. And maybe we concluded at the end of that, that, okay, it's not going to really, we, we don't expect any fruits of the labor, but.
I mean, we, we can look at it. I, I think the thing to key in on though is, is the major savings. Everything we've done on the edges has not really done anything to stop our downward trend. And, and yes, I absolutely can look at that. It'd be a great benefit, and I think that would be something useful from a health perspective. I just don't know that we're going to save the money needed to not be in the hole.
Well, I don't know that. I, I don't know. I just know there are companies that do it.
Sure, absolutely.
And so because of that, I, I think it's worth looking at. And we can, I mean, that doesn't commit us to say, okay, let's do this. I mean, what's, what's the data on it? Is it, is it beneficial or is it not? And, and I know that all these companies are maybe different than us based on maybe the number of employees they've got or what the scale looks like. And, you know, there's so many factors that go into that. It's just something that I'm trying to consider as I'm thinking about, if we had four components up there of how can we, you know, make this, make this work, is, is this a small piece of that? Versus relying entirely on increased contributions?
No, 100%. Yeah, I mean, if, because if, if we're relying on increased contributions, then the message is it's going to go up and it's going to go up.
Yeah.
A lot.
There's never going to be an end.
Right.
24% is what we need this year.
Yeah, you need to have the triangle, but all things working together. Employees getting healthier, paying less for healthcare, meaning. What, which is what we're trying, we're looking to do here. Because I have seen some employers, you know, say, well, if our people were just healthier. And there is an absolute aspect to that, right? We're all, you know, more sedentary than we ever used to be. You know, but the surgery today is a lot more than it was seven years ago, which has nothing to do with necessarily the health of that, that person. So I think if we look at solving it on all three of those angles, you know, health of our population aligned with optimal providers and paying less through revenue avenues, we'll be in a better place. And I'm on board. Hey, I, general rule of thumb, although I got my screening back, I had one item that was a little bit higher. I'd love to pay, you know, less there, or bring more awareness, right, for others.
I guess the other, the other piece of this, and I'm just kind of. Guess the other, the other piece of this, and I'm just kind of doing some math in my head, is I, is I really hope whatever happens in the budgetary world, that, you know, people don't lose their, any entire salary increase to healthcare, you know, because that just kind of negates the whole idea of putting more in your check, so...
Yep.
I don't know what that looks like, but...
I mean, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Rob.
I was just going to say, to that, I mean, the monthly contributions in almost every case go down on the employee side. Now, with the increased deductible, yes. If you use the healthcare, then obviously it's going to cost $250 more in the one particular plan than it did the year before. But they were at 63 and, well, what were they, were here? Sorry. What was 3559?
There's two, right, 32.
Oh, okay. So that one is going up $8. Sorry, nevermind. I stand corrected. Again, I'm not the numbers guy.
Yeah, that's going up.
I think we can kick this around for hours. I think it's just the unfortunate scenario in my mind of, a lot, again, a lot of thought and effort went into this on so many people's fronts, so I want to give kudos to you, Josh, your team, Rob, your team, for all the work that's gone into putting this together. And I think it's just a matter of, of moving forward. And again, the biggest piece from, from Ms. Cunningham's standpoint and Kim's standpoint is we've got to communicate the heck out of this, and we've got to educate our staff and let them know that, they certainly know what's going on in the world. They know what inflation is, they know everything else, they know the cost of everything is going up. It doesn't make that scenario any less of a burden, but it's not completely out of left field. So it's a matter in my mind of really almost over-communicating this as we go out, come to people where they are, be where they are, and help them make an educated decision, and then hope like heck that we can move forward and control these costs a little bit better and be in a different scenario next year, and none of us can ever contemplate that today. But I just, I think it's pretty clear at this point that, of the options that are on the table and that, where the committee's recommendation is, and I think we just need to, to move forward and do what we can to shore this up.
If you don't mind, I have one thing food for thought. I mean, I, so I, full disclosure, I'm in the VA system because I got rated high enough to be in the VA system, and I didn't want to mess that up, so I've never participated in the health plan. With this new HPI option, I'm willing to risk my VA, and I'm, if it's an option on the table, I'm going to join it because it's that attractive, at least to me. So, you know, food for thought, that's all.
Or to communicate.
You'll do both, right?
Say again?
You'll do both. You'll do V A and, yeah.
Anyway, that's all I have.
Great conversation.
Man. I mean, I've got more slides.
Thank you.
Nice slide.
We'll save those for next time.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, so what do, what do the next steps of this process look like for us? There's a...
I will defer to...
I'll bring back recommendations from this year.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have, thank you very much, despite all the bad news you all brought.
One last item.
Thank you, anyway.
This should be a little...
All right, so our last item is 3.03. It comes as a request from the city of Clermont regarding a piece of property, McKinney Park, as it's known.
Yes, thank you. I will try to be quick. I'm sure you are all worn out. So this is, the McKinney Park is four acres that is actually owned by the district. It was purchased with the property on the south, oh, that doesn't show up so good, where our Region 3 offices are, they were both purchased together in 1960. In 1998, it was leased to the city of Clermont for 25 years. Technically, it was built that they got one-year lease for every $5,000 of capital investment that the city put into the park. They have made a formal request to us to donate that property to the city. Back in 21, or 2021, we had an appraisal done on the park property as well as the Clermont Elementary. It was valued at $1 million at that point, which is $250,000 per acre, but in the way that appraisals are an art and not necessarily a science, and what your comps at any given time are. We also had later, in November of '22, we had the parking/Region 3 offices evaluated without just the, the property, not including the buildings that are on there. That was evaluated at $780,000, so $156,000 an acre. So, you know, read into that what you will.
Kelly, real quick on that one. Help me on the acres. How do we go from four to five?
So it's two separate pieces of property. Right, so McKinney Park is actually the area outlined in red. The other, the five acres is the area south of that, and as you can see, it's separated by quite a few houses and actually some churches in there. And so you have some options. You can choose to renew the lease, you can choose to donate the property to the city of Clermont, you can choose to sell the property outright to the city. James has a more technical term, but for clarity of my purposes, I'm calling it lease-to-own with the city of Clermont whereby, you know, we could negotiate terms where they would purchase it over several years, or we could choose to sell the property through a general public sale. If we do decide to dispose of the property, we would have to do a board resolution declaring a surplus, and we'd have to do an educational plan survey, both of which are just kind of technical details. I will say, I've had just some, some real brief conversations with the city. They are, would be interested, maybe, you know, they're, they're workshopping it tomorrow, but might be interested in doing, you know, some kind of purchase agreement whereby they could spread it out over a couple of years. One of the other things too is that they'd like to try to keep that money in the community, and of course, we have our Lincoln Park Education Center that is coming up, and so it's something that, you know, we could potentially reinvest in that project if, if the board so desired, so...
Is it okay for me to ask a question?
Of course, please do.
The area across the street where Title I and Region 3 are located.
Mm-hmm.
Because the parking is so limited in what's to become the Lincoln Park Educational Center.
Mm-hmm.
Would that property not be used as possible parking?
Um, so the area, you know, we are proposing to keep the five acres on the south side.
Okay, so that was just information.
This would just be, yeah, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
That's just information.
Just in how we acquire them.
So they would just be interested in the park?
It's the red, well...
In McKinney, in McKin...
That hasn't been their entire interest.
I think they'd probably be interested in more, but I think that, you know, we have pretty much made it clear that we're not really...
So presently, they would just be interested?
I would not recommend to you that you sell the five acres, that, you know, you would only dispose of the four acres.
Because you had it there, I wasn't sure if it was connected.
So candidly, though, they have asked for a donation of Clermont Elementary property multiple times, they've asked for a donation of the five-acre property multiple times, that, you know, that they have some ambitious goals. I don't know that they've got a lot of funding for their goals or any, but, but I think we have just been emphatic that, you know, we as a district have, have some particular needs. Certainly the Clermont Elementary property, we're talking about the Lincoln Park Education Center, that five acres is very prime for us, and we've already, you're already utilizing it in a number of different ways, and being so centrally located to the south end of the county, I mean, there's a lot of potential for future needs of the district. So that, but that four acres, it's already developed as a park, right? So I guess, I mean, the likelihood that we would at some point pave over their park, you know, not be a very neighborly thing to do, so...
If you're not going to pave over their park, why does the lease that they have now, why wouldn't that continue to work?
You could. I mean, it is up to the board at this point.
They've expressed ownership. I'm going to acquiesce always to Mr. Dodd on this one because it's part of your district, but, but is it worth any goodwill just to give it to them, or can we negotiate another piece of property that may be more advantageous to us?
You mean in exchange?
You know, we did at one point talk potential land swap, you know, but...
We did, and, and I don't know that they own anything at this point that...
Would be of great use to us.
That would be of use to us. We kind of looked through to see if there was, you know, something adjacent to one of our schools or something that, that could benefit us, and I was not able to identify anything. The city wasn't able to identify anything.
Could they use their collective influence with a developer, for example, to donate some land to us? It would almost be the same end result.
Any donation from a developer requires impact fee credits by statute.
Okay, so the city of Clermont buys it from the developer? And order it at their firm?
Do we have a past practice of doing things like this?
Um, you know, every, everyone is individual, so, you know, there are...
I mean, I can't think of anybody that we've just done that with in the past 20 or 25 years.
That, you know, we just donate donated land.
You know, the...
Not that I can think of.
We have a negotiation going still right now with the city of Tavares, right, for the baseball fields, or have you concluded that one?
We have not. We've been collecting some information on that, and that'll come back to you as well.
Yeah, but that's a case of, just being fair, where some of the conversation I've heard, it just leaves a bad ma, bad taste in my mouth, and we want to be the same kind of partners. I mean, it's almost do as you say, not as I do.
I can certainly appreciate that thought, but I think if I've learned anything over the last four hours of this workshop, we've got rising costs of construction, we've got rising costs of health insurance, and I'm all for creative solutions where we can all find ways to win, but I don't think there's any scenario where we can give them this land at this point in time and not do a disservice to our, our district and our, and our staff with everything else that we're dealing with. That just doesn't seem wise to me.
Well, $624,000 is, based on the numbers, it's four acres at 156,000, you said.
If you use that number.
If we use the appraisal for the five acres and extrapolate over that one. Yeah, I done the same.
It's $624,000 is what we're talking about.
Now, the city would tell you that we would never get that because the way they would parcel this up and they would never approve any sort of commercial development there, that, you know, these, these lots, you know, would generate no more than 30,000 apiece or whatever it is, and, and so, you know...
But the thing is, is that if we give, if we spent the 600, if we were to read some term, let's talk, let's talk in the range of zero to 624,000.
Mm-hmm.
That it's already a park, we've established that, it's not going to change in its use, and so it's either continue the lease, which has been zero, that we've gotten.
Right, right.
Or we win some major goodwill, and the constituents that are paying property taxes in that area are using that park, which is public land. And so what is the difference if the city owns it or we own it? It's going to be a park.
Mm-hmm.
I think you're right that it's going to be a park, but again, you know, I just don't see that we've done that for any other sector of the county. So that's a concern for me, because I know historically, when I was principal at Eustis Heights, the city of Eustis was interested in their baseball fields. Now, granted, most people in the room were different, but they still do not own that correct. The school board still retains ownership of the baseball parks in Eustis.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so, again, I just don't know, are we setting a precedence where we're saying, okay, if a city with a legitimate need comes forward, then we're obligated to provide?
I'm nervous about that kind of precedent.
And that concerns me. I also hear what Tyler's saying. You know, we, we don't necessarily have money to just give away.
This is property that we purchased.
Correct.
And, I mean, I'm inclined to, to think that if, if they would like to make an offer on this lease-to-own sort of thing, that perhaps I'd be, be interested in considering that. I mean, I, because I don't, I don't know that if I, I see us, you know, if it is ever going to not be a park, right? I mean, our next opportunity would be in 25 years, right, to say, okay, now that you've had this park for 50 years, we're going to, we're going to build a very small school on this four acres.
That'd be a different board, a bigger board. That'd be a very self-centered board.
Yeah, it sure would be. You know, so I don't, I don't see that, you know, and, and so as a result, I mean, if it's always going to be a park, right, who, what does it matter who owns it? I, I don't, I don't know that a million dollars is the, is the right price tag for that, but something is.
I think, it sounds to me like my next steps are basically to go back to the city, say the board might be interested, bring them an offer on what, you know, you would be willing to pay for it and what the terms would be. Or if they are not able to, you know, they have, so looking at, you know, other options, they, they basically have indicated they, they might, and I'm, I'm not going to speak for the city, so, that, you know, they might be able to find some recreation impact fee kind of dollars that they would be able to spend. So that's, those are very limited, like our impact fees are very limited in what they can do with them. So, so, you know, I think they would have to kind of build that term of what they can actually use their money for and then come back to us, and then if not, then, you know, the board always has the option of renewing the lease.
But if I'm on the city council of Clermont, and I have the choice of buying that piece of property for 624,000, or sign a lease with the district for zero, why am I even going to think about how am I going to fund this?
Because I think it's, I think it's just part of their larger motivation or ambition